Counselor McCoy, you're going to make a motion on additions.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of additions to the agenda.
Sir. Any discussion?
We have, well, we've got a report from the Salem Strategic Plan Goals, whichever one it is, that's added, Public Transportation Council Workgroup Recommendations, and then we also have some public testimony.
Great, okay, thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we're going to move right into public comment. Everyone's allowed three minutes. There's an orange light will come on at two minutes, at three minutes I will ask you to stop, so why not just stop on your own? That'd be my guess, but it'll make it easier on all of us, but we're on a fairly tight timeline today and want to make sure we get everyone's thoughts in and give the council time to work its way through both your thoughts and the work they've done in their work groups. So, I'm going to start in with Linda Walmark, followed by Carolyn O'Brien. Good morning.
Good morning. Mayor Bennett, council members, my name is Linda Walmark and I am a resident of Ward Three, and I'm here this morning on behalf of 350 Salem, Oregon, the local chapter of the International Grassroots Climate Change Organization, 350.org. I want to thank you first of all for your dedication to the city and for taking our testimony this morning. We commend you for drafting the vision and mission statements which recognize the value of a sustainable quality environment. And Salem can be proud of the city's efforts in the past made toward that goal, including the 2009 Environmental Action Plan, the 2010 Salem Energy Strategy, and continuing projects to improve biking and pedestrian connections, among other measures. In keeping with the draft vision and mission statements, 350 Salem, Oregon encourages the city to squarely address the reality of global climate change. In Oregon, we're already seeing climate change impacts that will only accelerate in the years to come: shifting climate patterns that affect agriculture, forestry, and tourism; increased frequency and severity of forest fires; rising temperatures and drought; heavier rainfall events; decreased snowpack; and negative human health effects. We ask that you proactively plan and invest in strategies, processes, and infrastructure in Salem that will address these impacts. Mayor Bennett and honorable city councilors, we urge you to commit to create and adopt a Salem Climate Action Plan. The role of cities in addressing greenhouse gas reduction is critical, with over half of the world's population currently living in cities. As the state's capital and the second-largest city in Oregon, we believe that Salem should join other Oregon cities such as Hillsborough, Corvallis, Portland, Eugene, and Ashland that have adopted climate action plans. Such a plan will further state goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, support community preparation for anticipated climate change-related impacts, and produce co-benefits such as greater energy efficiencies and other positive-cost-benefit investments. The five steps to developing and implementing a climate action plan are: Step one, conduct a citywide greenhouse gas inventory. Step two, establish quantitative carbon emission reduction targets. Step three, develop a climate action plan for achieving targets. Step four, implement the climate action plan. And step five, monitor and verify those results. We call for the short-term goal of taking inventory of Salem's greenhouse gas emissions. Subsequent steps would be addressed as medium- and long-range goals as appropriate. And such a plan would analyze sectors as diverse as buildings and energy, food and agriculture, land use and transportation, consumption and waste, health and social services, and urban natural resources. We ask for your bold and insightful leadership to help Salem successfully meet the challenge of a future of increasing climate change. We urge you to create and adopt a climate action plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Ms. O'Brien, you're followed by Meg Rowe.
Thank you. My name's Carolyn O'Brien. Mayor Bennett and councilors, thank you for allowing me to add my comments to this very important subject of climate change. I'm attending this meeting today as a very concerned citizen. A majority of Americans recognize the rapid and escalating heating of our Earth's atmosphere as the main, one of the main crises we face today, if not the main crisis. Greenhouse gas emissions are adding carbon to our atmosphere at an ever-alarming rate. Greenhouse gas emissions are adding, we know that cities are responsible for this, seven, up to 70 percent, some studies say. Having said that, cities have the opportunity to make the best advancement toward reducing it. Here's some highlights I want to point out. Lowering carbon emissions reduces, creates local jobs. Fighting climate change means saving energy which equates to adding economic benefits to the community. Money stays here if a household has more money to spend. The type of jobs that it creates: installation for windows, solar panels, weatherization upgrades. These types of jobs cannot be outsourced. They're local, they belong here, they're part of our community. They pay middle-class wages and add value to the small businesses that do this. Lower energy costs means more money stays in the community. I mentioned that. People that bike, walk, and take public transit tend to shop locally, therefore spending their money here. Again, the local businesses benefit. Being a green city attacks green enterprises. When Salem joins other cities with our own cap, then Salem and Oregon become more of a magnet for green-oriented business. If we don't seize this opportunity, they'll bypass us and head down to California. A very good example is Hillsborough. Hillsborough is very unique. Every city has a uniqueness. Hillsborough has recognized their green businesses. Intel is their main employer, but the next three on the list that come down in numbers are clean energy businesses like Solar. Santa Fe, New Mexico, population of 82,000. The mayor there saw that mitigating climate change with a properly-designed greenhouse policy was a natural pathway to reducing poverty in his city and inequality by creating opportunities for employment for people of varying levels of education. Benefits to our city would be that our environment will be cleaner, our citizens would achieve a higher level of health, and our community will be more cohesive. There's really no better way to improve the livability of a community than to experience it at walking, biking, and getting to know your neighbors. Everyone benefits. Livability also equates to a healthier population. I am a practicing nurse and my career has been spent teaching patients how to...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Meg Rowe is followed by Mike Slater.
Thank you. Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Meg Rowe. I'm a resident of Ward One, and I'm here today for myself and to, on behalf of 350.org Salem. The opinions I express today are my own. A strategic planning process takes significant investment of time and resources, as I'm sure you're all aware, and proactive work has the potential to ensure the social, environmental, and fiscal sustainability of our city for decades to come. One of the values identified in the recent city assessment is that Salem is, quote, "fair, equitable, and safe." To this end, your planning process must necessarily include a consideration of climate equity. Low-income and communities of color frequently experience an unequal burden of the impacts of our changing climate. Social vulnerability, as measured by health, education, and socioeconomic status, is high in the city of Salem relative to other areas of our state. These families are especially vulnerable to the local impacts of changing climate and suffer first from extreme heat, extreme cold, and the health impacts of poor air quality. I'm here today to encourage you to include a clear commitment to adopt a climate action plan through a public stakeholder engagement process, and to apply a lens of climate equity to that process to ensure that all of Salem's residents share a healthy, safe future. Under the current federal administration, the best-case scenario would be to stall on climate action. Instead, we face regressive policies and a certain increase in U.S. emissions, altering the atmosphere, oceans, and aquifers, and leading to global wars over insufficient resources and a loss of security at home and abroad, in short, dire consequences for future generations. Climate change is a global problem, but the impacts are local and so are some of the solutions. Responsibility rests with us. Citizens, government, and industry can forge initiatives crafted from ingenuity and elbow grease. As Michael Bloomberg recently told the Chinese General Chamber of Commerce, cities, businesses, and citizens will continue reducing emissions because they have concluded, just as China has, that doing so is in their best interest. Local governance bodies across the country are planning for a low-carbon future. Jackson County adopted a climate and health action plan in 2013 as part of the CDC's Climate Ready States and City Initiative. Five other Oregon counties also participated: Benton, Crook, Wasco, Gilliam, and Sherman. Among many northwest cities that have committed to this work are Ben, Corvallis, Oregon City, Ashland, and in neighboring states Tacoma, Spokane, Issopoa, Linwood, Bellingham, and Boise. As one example, Tacoma in 2005 signed the mayor's, the U.S. Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement, committing the city to reduce its greenhouse gas emissions.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry your time's up.
I have submitted comments.
Great, thank you. I was going to suggest if you, if you had, it sounded like you had a lot of interesting stuff to say. Joyce Judy will follow Mike Slater.
Good morning, Mayor Bennett and councilors. My name is Mike Slater. I live at 4833 Firdell Drive. I've owned my home there for about 11 years now and have lived in Salem for 13 years. Shortly after the Broadway Commons Open House, a dozen friends of mine and I met and decided to follow along and participate in the Strategic Plan Initiative. Over the past few months, we've reviewed and discussed a range of city documents and attended a number of the Strategic Plan discussions.
Michael, just a second. Michael's got a red light on. Who's in charge of lights? There we go.
And I worked so hard to be here today.
Excellent. Well, you're going to pick up a little extra time, Michael, for that.
Very clever. We submitted detailed written comments, and I won't repeat them here. Instead, I'd like to present some of the values that give rise to our recommendations. The first is safety. By that, I don't mean police and fire services. In fact, given our low rates of crime and structural fires, we may be over-investing in police and fire services. Instead, I mean safe pedestrian and bike routes, safe municipal buildings for our public employees and our residents, and water that is safe to drink and air that is safe to breathe. Our second value is livability. One of the most important aspects of urban living is being able to experience nature when you step out of the door. That's why we believe that parks and open spaces, mature trees, and walking paths and bike routes that go someplace help make the city livable. They also make the city residents healthier and more prosperous. We believe that opportunity, too, is important. Our citizens should have the opportunity to have shelter if they are homeless, as well as the opportunity to buy a home if they are low-income. They should have the opportunity to start and grow a business. They should have an opportunity to get in their car, choose a city bus, or walk or bike safely to school or work. Finally, we believe that all of these values are subordinate to equity. Our citizens deserve the same level of safety, livability, and opportunity regardless of their income, age, race, or ethnicity. Right now, we don't think that the city meets those values. To achieve equity, the city will need to expand its investments in our low-income communities, even if that means delaying or reducing investments in our more affluent communities. And we understand, of course, that we can't achieve our expectations around safety, livability, and opportunity, and equity, without spending more money than we are spending now. That is why we support raising additional revenues, so long as the means are not regressive. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Joyce Judy, and then April Brendan Locke.
Hi, my name is Joyce Judy. I'm in Ward Five, here in Salem. First, let me say thank you, Mayor Bennett and councilors, for undertaking this task. For me, I'm speaking more from my heart. Those of us here from the Salem Strategic Plan Study Group each have things in this plan we are passionate about. For me, it is affordable housing and homelessness. There are only 180 units in the pipeline to be built, and they won't be complete until 2018. We need 600 units in the pipeline annually. In a year, you will likely have double the number of homeless due to landlords like mine, one of the largest in the state. This landlord has raised my rent 26 percent in the last two years. I have applied for senior housing, which is a two-year wait, and Section Eight, which is a three-year rate. At this rate, I may become another homeless statistic. As a council, your instinct is likely to give a little something to everyone, but in your plan, only affordable housing is a true emergency. You can beautify downtown, but without housing, your pretty streets will be filled with homeless. How do families go to work when they can't bathe or wash their clothes? How can their kids go to school or the library when they have no home to go to? This council needs to make affordable housing its highest priority. Find inventive ways to incent contractors to build. Shorten the time to approve these projects and ask staff to make the process less onerous. Four months to review an application and five months for a contractor to respond to requested changes is way too long. Can the city partner in some way with contractors? What about community land trusts? There are many options out there. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I've got a question, please.
Questions, yes.
I'm curious, incentives to developers, any specific...
Say again.
Incentives to developers, to builders, you mentioned, incentives to builders. Can you explain?
I was thinking more in terms of things like grants, where you could give them money. You might have city land available that you could sell to them at a discount to give them an incentive to build on those lands, things of that nature.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? Great, thank you very much. Following April is Kirk Leonard.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor Bennett, and thank you, councilors. I really appreciate the work you are doing in developing the strategic plan. My name is April Brendan Locke, and my husband and I have lived in Ward Seven for a year and a half, and I would like to discuss the recommendations of the Affordable Housing, Social Services, and Homelessness Council Work Group. I work on the Capitol Mall. Over the winter, I had nearly daily contacts with people who are chronically homeless as I entered my office building. One freezing winter morning, a man in a wheelchair greeted me as I went in. Later, as I headed out of the building, I noticed that he seemed unconscious. As I took my phone out to call the police, a state police officer approached and roused him. She knew his name and his specific addiction. This man desperately needs the permanent supportive housing the work group discussed in the April 14th work session. I fully support the work group recommended goal to implement a housing fur strategy to create permanent supportive housing. I also agree with the approach laid out in the recommendation that seeks to increase the availability of federal funding for local social services. I was taken aback to learn that Lane County receives $2,200 per year per homeless client in federal funding, while Marion County receives only $730 per year per homeless client, according to Jimmy Johns of the Arches Program. I urge the city to continue investing in helping local agencies meet federal guidelines in order to increase our share of federal funding. However, I urge the council to do this in a way that addresses the real obstacles to local agencies rather than simply creating shallow mandates. One example of this is the work group's recommendation to require all city-funded agencies to use ServicePoint as part of the HUD Required Coordinated Entry Data Collection Point of Entry System. ServicePoint is a software that allows all agencies in an area to track contacts with clients. As an IT project manager, including, excuse me, as an IT project manager, I see firsthand how challenging it can be to bring in new software to an organization, including negotiating a suitable license agreement, securing funding for the licenses, training employees on the software, and changing the culture and processes for employees. This may simply be too much for agencies with limited resources. I hope that the work group will find out why these agencies have not yet implemented the software. Would there be a return on investment if the city were to help key local agencies with the cost of the software implementation and training? Finally, I hope that the final draft of the recommended goals will include measurable, data-driven targets. The current goals are steps in the right direction, and I applaud you for them, but they're not measurable, and it will be difficult to determine whether a goal has been achieved. Thank you very much for considering my input.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Mr. Leonard?
Mayor Bennett and council, I'm Kirk Leonard, Ward Two resident, and I'm here to express my appreciation for this process. There's been issues in the past with respect to public input and, you know, give-and-take dialogue, and this process feels much better than past processes, if you will. And I particularly, April mentioned it, I particularly wanted to cite these, the small group, the work groups that we had as potentially really increasing the value of public interaction. When you've got a staff person, a counselor, and citizens of care, people who come out early on a Saturday morning, it really can lead to some more substantial and constructive dialogue. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Okay, anyone else want to testify? Mr. Burghel? Okay, that's two. Come to the other mic, and that'll...
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In listening to all the great ideas...
I need your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm Peter Burghel from, I live at 1850 Saginaw Street South.
Great, thanks.
In Ward Two. So, in listening to all the wonderful ideas that are being put forward as goals, I see the same problem that I'm sure all of you see, is how are we going to pay for this? And I see that same problem at the state level. How are we going to pay for this? And yet, at the same time, I see that we have a whole lot of money going out of the community because we're banking with large corporations that take the profits and remove them from the city. And every time somebody takes out a credit card and makes a purchase using a credit card, there's a chunk of money going out of the city, going out of the city, going out of the city. If we could capture some of that money and keep it in the city, there'd be money to deal with the homeless situation, to deal with climate change, to deal with the transit situation, and so forth. So, what my proposal is, is that you start looking at the possibility, this is a five-year plan I know you're thinking about, and this is going to take a while, but I think that what you ought to do is put in, among your goals, establishing a community or city bank that captures that money and does not make a profit on it directly, but uses the money to do the projects that we are talking about here this morning. So, at the same time, that bank could issue a local credit card that would be usable in the community and which would capture those funds that are now going out of the community every time that we use a MasterCard or a Visa Card or Discover or whatever. So, I think there's an opportunity there. It's not a simple thing to do. It's a complicated thing to do. I've been looking into it some lately. But I think it's a great opportunity for the city, and I think it should be considered. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. And name and address, please.
Mayor Bennett and councilmen, I'm Laurie Doherty. I live in Ward Two, and I just want to speak very briefly in support of people that are talking about a climate action plan for Salem. In the face of federal denial and dysfunction, it is critically important that state and cities step up to this, you know, to take, to deal with climate change. It's a challenge, no doubt about it, but it's an opportunity for a healthier, more efficient, resilient, and forward-thinking city. I submitted a written statement. I won't read the whole thing. I hope it was distributed. I sent it to the city recorder's office. Thank you.
Yeah, it was. Thank you very much. Alrighty, that's the end of the public comment section, unless someone's got a burning desire to comment. Okay, great, thank you very much. We'll move on then. So, we'll begin with the discussion of the strategic plan. I'm going to turn it over to Brian Scott.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good morning. I'm Brian Scott with BDS Planning and Urban Design and part of the Eco Northwest Consulting Team facilitating the strategic planning process. Good to see everyone here on this Saturday morning. Our purpose this morning, between now and in the next three hours, is to walk through the six, the feedback from the six work groups that have been working on goals for the strategic plan, and give them some feedback on the goals, and ideally, we would arrive at six goal statements or some number of goal statements. That's our purpose this morning. This is the time to say, are these the right six? Do we need more? Do we need less? And there will be discussion, I'm sure, of specific actions and possible measurements, but the goal this morning is to agree on what the goals are. So, that's where we are. I want to run through just a few slides to remind you where we are in the process, and then I'm going to walk away from the microphone and I'll talk loud so that everybody can hear me, but most of the talking after that's going to be by all of you, so I'm going to go up and record on the wall graphic. So, just a quick review of the process. Where are we in this strategic planning process? We have had this diagram we've been using showing three phases of the process: the situation assessment, the strategic plan, and a transition plan. And where we are is we've finished the situation assessment and we're hard into the strategic planning phase of the process. As a reminder, during the situation assessment, we did analysis of existing documents. We did interviews with key stakeholders and all of the council members and many of the staff members and members of partner organizations. We did a statistically valid, community-wide telephone survey. We had a workshop, an afternoon workshop charrette with a group of invited stakeholders, and then that same day, we had an open, community open house that was very well-attended, got a lot of feedback. And then we've had several city council work sessions like this one. During the situational assessment process, we completed a vision statement, a mission statement, and identified some core values of the city. So, we've achieved all of that, and here we are in Phase Two at a council work session, and we're getting feedback from the work groups and actions that were identified at your last work session, which are affordable housing, social services and homelessness, economic development in downtown, vision for growth and development, critical infrastructure, sustainable service delivery, and public transportation. So, we're going to get a report from council members that worked in each of those work groups and a suggestion for a goal statement, and then we want to have some discussion and hopefully agree on those goal statements. This morning, we have about 20 minutes for each of those work groups, and so my job is to try and keep us moving on in that pace so we'll have time for a brief break in the middle and get completed with this part of the agenda by noon. Just a quick review of decisions that we've already made, progress to date. We talked about a vision, sort of strategic planning terminology here. A vision is an overarching statement that describes where you want Salem to be in the future. And at your last session, we agreed that Salem will be a safe and livable capital city with a sustainable economy and environment that is open to all. At the same session, we talked about a mission, which is a statement of the city of Salem's organizational purpose in achieving the vision, and we agreed that the city of Salem provides fiscally sustainable and quality services to enrich the lives of present and future residents, the quality of our environment and neighborhoods, and the vitality of our economy. We talked about values, which are guiding principles that articulate the manner in which the city will carry out its mission, agreeing that there were four... which the city will carry out its mission, agreeing that there were four: opportunity, compassion, responsiveness, and accessibility. Opportunity means that Salem is proactive and forward-thinking. Compassion means that Salem is fair, equitable, and safe. Responsiveness means that Salem is at your service with capacity and partnerships to prepare for the future, and accessibility means Salem is open and inclusive. So today, we want to focus on goals. A goal is a broad prioritized future condition, achievement, or target. Ideally, it would be something you could measure, and I think importantly, in my experience, I've done a lot of strategic planning for a lot of organizations, you want a limited number of goals. If you have 23 goals, nobody's going to be able to remember what they are, and sometimes I think you might as well not have goals. So we try to limit that number. In your last meeting, we talked, we identified six work groups, sort of a structure for that. Today would be the day to question whether six is the right number, whether you could do it with four, or whether you wanted to have seven or eight. If you try to go for 23, I'm going to try really hard to talk you out of it. So I think a limited number of goals would be that thing. An example of a goal, just pulling from the work in the work groups, an example might be that the city will develop a comprehensive, long-term vision for future growth and development in Salem that has buy-in and ownership by the community. That would be a plausible goal statement. That will be open for consideration in a bit. Where we'll go from here, so we're going to, today's goal is to just agree on the goal statements, but then next up in the process are some actions. Those would be specific activities aligned to a goal that can be measured and tracked within specific timeframes. So perhaps, if the last statement was a goal statement, you might have an action that was conduct a citywide outreach to learn the community's goals and priorities for future growth and development. That might be an action that you were going to take to achieve that goal. And then we want to have some sort of performance measures, which would be data that can be collected and reviewed to track and measure progress on the activities. You might say 2,000 community members participate in such a process would be a measurement of that activity. So there's some examples of where we are. I want to have just a few ground rules for this conversation. We've used these before, but everyone's voice counts, so I want everybody on the council to actively participate. I know you will, but that means take turns and avoid airtime. We've got 20 minutes per goal, so I would encourage you to stay to the point and focus. Remember that each perspective is valuable. Listen respectfully, and it's, and questions are okay. If you don't understand what somebody's getting at, ask them. Let's keep going for forward movement and making positive recommendations, and I'm going to try and get you toward working consensus, that is, if we get into serious wordsmithing, I may be asking you, can you live with it? And can we, can we get there and refine it a little later if needed? So, questions about what we're here for this morning? Counselor McCoy?
Since I'm a presenter, how long do you want me to talk presenting all this stuff I've got? Five minutes, 10 minutes, or what?
Well, good, good point. We have 20 minutes, and you're first, so this is a perfect time. So, you know, I would recommend that somewhere in the five to eight-minute range would be great, so that we have a good 10 or 15 minutes for your colleagues to ask questions and agree on a goal statement. So with that, I'm going to shut up. Counselor McCoy, do you want to talk about...
Brian, if I may, just a quick reminder, we are on CCTV, so please use your microphones as you would at a council meeting.
And Brian, you'll need to use this if you're going to wander.
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm the spokesperson for the first group, which is the Affordable Housing, Social Services, and Homelessness Council Work Group. Members of the committee are myself, councilors Anderson and Cook, Mayor Bennett, and our housing administrator, Andy Wilch, is the lead staff person, and I'd like to also, at this point, acknowledge all the work Kelly Battaglia did on developing all the product, all the product we had for, to study as a work group, as well as coming up, I'm sure, with the help of others, the report that I'm going to discuss today in four, five, six minutes. So, as we work through these issues, dealing with this stuff, we sort of had a template. We were supposed to define the issue we were dealing with, provide some goals, then we had to discuss definition and scale of the issue, details on causes and effects of the issue, desired outcomes. So I got to put all that together here real quickly. So we broke this down because it's an awfully broad thing, affordable housing. We broke down into one piece, and then we combined social services and homelessness. So I'll deal with affordable housing first. The basic issue, or the issues we're covering, we're dealing with, real briefly, in affordable housing, over 54% of Salem's households are rent burden, paying more than 30% of their income towards housing costs. 6,844 Salem families earn less than $25,000 a year. A minimum wage earner making $9.75 an hour or $20,000 a year full-time can afford a rent of $563 a month. The average Salem apartment for one bedroom is $700 a month, and for two bedrooms, it's $871 a month. And rents are increasing at a rate of more than 10% annually. Salem's housing stock is currently missing at least 6,400 affordable housing units for its residents. And to add upon all this, as the demand for all types of rental housing continues to outpace development, the vacancy rate in Salem is declining, and it's now at 1.3%. So you've got a sort of a perfect storm going on here with rates going up, there's no homes, there's nowhere to rent anywhere, 1.3%. There's a demand clearly of 6,400 affordable housing units, and so we've got a real issue here in how we proceed and deal with that, with that problem. Additionally, in the latest community survey that Brian referenced in December of 2016, Salem residents identified affordable housing, including homelessness, as one of the two key issues that we should look at as city leaders as we develop this plan. 21% of residents mentioned an issue related to housing or homelessness in that, in that survey. That's up 13 percentage points from a previous survey in May of 2016. So this is not only something we recognize, it's in, the community is now recognizing and asking us to do something with it. That's affordable housing, real quickly. On social services and homelessness, again, we combine them because they're interrelated. There's a greater community need for social services, specifically for homeless shelters and food assistance, than there are currently services and funding to address them. There's also a lack of service coordination, strategic funding, and accurate, comprehensive data to fully understand the true nature of the needs and gaps in social services. Until that process is in place and available universally in our community, the available data for analysis will remain incomplete and fragmented, and any approaches we take to deal with it are probably not going to be based on the best, best information to deal with them effectively. Homelessness continues to be one of our greatest challenges. There are estimates of 1,500 to 2,000 homeless citizens in the Salem area alone. Most striking is the number of chronically homeless in the Salem area. In fact, of the 1,000 homeless individuals evaluated with the vulnerability index, known as the VI SPADAT, and that's what we'll mention, and don't ask me what SPADAT stands for. But what this is, is we've got folks from marches going out into the community right now, seeking out the homeless, where they live, and when they find them, they interview them on this VI SPADAT index, and it's an index from zero to 20, zero being, you know, you're not in danger of homelessness, 20 is the highest it can go. The statewide average for everybody that this is applied to is 7.5% for those that are homeless. In Salem, our average is 9.6, which is much higher, and the reason for that is what they call, we have a really large number of chronically homeless that are trimorbid in that, which means they're suffering from addictions, mental health issues, and they've been chronically homeless for a long period of time, which rises that score up, and it's much higher even than the Portland area, and just indicates the challenges that we deal with, and we see them with the homeless we deal with and see on the streets. Of those folks, 56% of those households reported any income. When we say households, that's one of the people that was, the homeless people that were interviewed. 56% reported any income, so 44% have no income. 42% report felonies on their records, 8% are sexual offenders, who are then banned from most housing options, and 41% report domestic violence history, with 43% of those report, and while, the same point, 43% of those report they are fleeing a current abuser. So this is a really complex social issue with a lot of different aspects on how we can reach out and deal with it.
So can you, can you sum it up with a proposed goal statement?
Sure. Go to the goals. Well, you have, I mean, I've got 11 pages here, bud. So, goals from this group. On affordable housing, the goals would be to increase the affordable rental housing stock in the Salem area, to create a sustainable, substantial funding stream for affordable housing, and to enhance neighborhood livability and resident engagement through thoughtful, affordable housing site selection, development, and design, which prioritizes access to transit, proximity to services, and the creation of a sense of community.
What were the first, what were the first few words of that third one?
Enhance neighborhood livability and resident engagement through, if there's no, through thoughtful, affordable housing site selection.
Okay.
That, it's a paragraph. And then for social services and homelessness goals, we have implement a housing-first strategy to create permanent supportive housing, maximize resources for and coordination of local social services, and support programs that house and serve the most vulnerable, at-risk homeless individuals. And finally, require, or develop a coordinate, require that all the social service folks work with a coordinated entry system, which is sort of, comes with the housing-first strategy, and basically coordinated entry system would be, we get them in housing, but we then track those folks as they move through the system, make sure they're able to access, and we help them access all the social services they need and are, that are available to them, and then track and make sure they, they're continuing in those programs to move out of homelessness on their, on their way, and not falling out because nobody's following through with them.
So that's coordinated entry and case management or something?
Yeah, coordinated, coordinated entry system, but yeah. And that's a fort, that's a short five to six minute report on a three-hour meeting.
So there's clearly a very productive and prolific meeting. Affordable housing, social services, and homelessness with a proposal that things that might be included in your goal would be increasing the stock of affordable housing, a sustainable funding stream for affordable housing, site selection for neighborhood livability, a housing-first strategy, and coordinated entry, a coordinated entry system and case management. Thoughts on an overarching, I mean, I guess I would, as a strategic planning tactic, I would propose one coordinated statement that pulled all that together that says what you're trying to accomplish?
Just squish it so we can see. Sorry.
Well, and I'll just, as long as we're doing this, I'll, I'll start on this. I would suggest that on the homelessness, we adopt the HRAP program as part of our budget. This year would put us right on target on our homeless goal. It has all, each of these elements, I think, are built into it.
H-R-A-P.
H-R-A-P.
And...
Do you need a second?
Is that a motion? That's not a motion.
Well, no, I'm just suggesting, and then if anyone says no, go ahead and say no.
It's a work session.
Yeah, I was just bringing it up.
I'd just like to ask a clarifying question, I think, for myself, but other people who might be wondering. When we, when we talk about affordable housing, are we talking about something that is, somebody may not be low-income, that like, hey, that's a good deal, I'm going to move there? Are we talking about low-income, meeting a certain federal threshold for income? Because I think it's really important to clarify what we mean by that, because that term is very thrown around a lot.
That's a great question, and I would, I would again encourage you to take it up to the level of broadly, what is Salem trying to accomplish on this topic?
I would just, in response to Counselor Kizer's request, this is kind of where the site, the thoughtful site selection and neighborhood enhancement portion of the statement came in, because there are specific guidelines for low-income versus affordable, and what our target is. It's the target that if someone is chronically homeless, that we get them housed. It's the target that if someone's in a cycle where they can't find a place to live and they're renting, but they want to buy a home, or if they're in a home that's too small to meet their needs, that they're able to do this. So there's shifting targets, and why we included the broader statement of thoughtful site selection and working to enhance neighborhoods is with the idea that, that there's enough broad, so we're not building just one particular type to meet one need.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that when we're talking about affordable housing in this process, we're talking about low-income meeting a defined threshold, just to clarify that.
Counselor Anderson, and then Counselor McCoy.
Thank you. I can clarify that. Affordable housing is a term of art, and it relates to a percentage of your income versus the overall community percentage of the income. And so, somebody else has already figured out what that means, and so I don't think we need to worry about that at all, but, you know, we've got two goals. One is to take care of those people who have some income, but not enough to, to find any kind of housing they can live in in our community, and the second one is to take care of those, as much as we can, of those people who don't even have the ability to do that on their own in any way, shape, or form, no how, no matter how much they're subsidized.
Counselor McCoy?
Well, I, yeah, I second. That's why we broke this down into affordable housing, and then we put social services and homelessness separately.
Right.
Because of that distinction, and it's two different issues.
Yeah. Mayor, did you have something?
Just, yeah, I, I think that's a really good point, too. The other reality is the maintenance of a housing stock that represents opportunities for entry for all income levels and advancement through homeownership, lifetime homeownership being available to them, which is an affordability concept. When you go to Portland now, two-bedroom, one-bath, in certain neighborhoods, $400,000. That's not affordable. Even in Portland, that's not affordable. The result is you start losing whole families that are moving out of Portland. You see the reduction in student populations and a variety of other things. So I think we need to keep the broad concept in mind, too. Unfortunately, the two sound the same. I wish we could figure out a different term for it, but...
So I would encourage, just, I agree with what the mayor just said. I would encourage us to focus instead of on the type of housing, shift the focus to the people. And because affordable housing and low-income housing are particular things, and when people who know these fields see those words, they think of particular areas, and I would encourage us just to focus on the people and say, we want to find adequate housing for all residents of Salem regardless, regardless of their economic status or situation. And I think if we just shifted to that, rather than on these particular words about the housing, and really focus on the people, that'll get us to the goal.
I really like that idea.
I want to run over and give Counselor Hoy a gold star.
There you go. He doesn't need any...
Taking it away from modesty.
Yeah, you should, you should repeat. You should repeat what you just said.
So that was, that was a broad statement that kind of encompassed this list of actions that is up here, so do you want to repeat that and see if everybody can live with what you said?
Can live with.
I don't know if it was a coherent sentence, but really just focusing the shift from, away from the housing and to the people, and developing an adequate supply of housing for people of all income, regardless of their income level or social status or situation. I said it better the first time.
Yeah. You were on the roll then.
That's good. A moment. Sure. Some... Residents, residents.
We want to ensure an adequate supply of housing for all residents regardless of their economic situation.
So, an adequate supply of housing for everyone regardless of their economic situation? Is that...
Brian, could we add our status to that, too?
Yeah. Sure.
Well, and some people have no economic situation.
Well, that's still a situation. Well, no money, no income, a situation.
I'm going back into the weeds and the details, not the overall.
We can always count on you, Counselor.
Yeah, I knew you could.
You're going to get a gold star, too, Tom.
I'm looking at the process, I'll go down. I'm being a lawyer here.
It'll be a different reason.
One of the things that we've discussed a lot is the continuum of care, and that's how you look... how you look at, how you look at how all agencies are in a certain area, deal with the homelessness and other social systems, and right now we have a continuum of care that is 18 counties?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. And we'd like to focus on a narrower continuum of care, at least I would, so we're really including Salem, Marion County, Polk County, and that gives us more control over what we can do with all the things that we've talked about there. And the final thing I would say about site selection is, to me, that's dispersal, and I think we talked about that, too, that all the sites we're selecting should all not be in one area or one part of the city.
So, it sounds like you were touching on the coordinated entry system?
Yes.
And then the site selection?
I'm just saying, all those things are easier to do if we're looking at federal funding and federal programs that we're a smaller, tighter group than we are, as now we're part of 28 counties, and a lot of time is spent protecting one's turf and doing things that have nothing to do with what's happening to hear us, to us here.
Councilor McCoy.
Okay. How far you want to get here? All that's in this that I didn't get to. We've got a list of recommended actions that include all these things in there.
So what I would take away from this as an opportunity to perhaps move on would be that I think I feel general agreement around the room that a statement that is pretty close to adequate supply of housing for everyone regardless of economic situation or status is what you're trying to accomplish?
Well, on the affordable housing part of it.
Right.
That's not the whole goal for including social services and...
You don't have five statements, or you want one for affordable housing?
I would have settled on one, right?
I was hoping for one statement for this whole subject area.
Is that sheet of paper for the whole work session today?
No, he's got another behind it.
I have another piece of paper, but I was trying to get three of them up on this piece of paper.
All right, now we know what your goal is.
Well, and I told you 20 minutes per topic, so...
So, Brian, I mean, the point here is we broke that up. That's perfect for affordable housing. I'm not sure that applies totally to specific social services.
Okay, so can you add a second clause to this brilliant sentence that...
I would suggest the...
Okay, all right.
I would suggest the second bullet point.
Yeah, and... Well, I have a couple of things. One is, I don't want to focus just on supply, I feel like that's too narrow, and a thought to combine what Tom was saying with what Chris was saying was to ensure community resources are coordinated to create housing security for all residents.
Nice.
So, so that kind of combines the service coordination and the...
Simply just saying, housing security for everyone regardless of economic situation or status.
Well, it's also coordinating the resource, so it's, to get to Tom's point of the resources around the homeless population and such, that, you know, coordinating all of that so that they can find housing, so it's trying to get to the social services as well as the affordable housing.
Housing and services for everyone regardless of economic status or situation?
Hold on.
It's a different...
It's kind of a different thing, a little bit, just because...
Housing is one little subset. Housing is one subset of the homeless issue, but it's not the reason they're really homeless. They need access to the social services, we need to coordinate those social services to make sure they have the easiest way to enter into them, stay into them, and we can track their progress in them.
What I was saying, what I was saying is, if we take bullet number two off of the sheet here where it says maximize resources for and coordination of local social services, I think we can do that at the end of that sentence and just say something like, with maximization of resources and coordination of local social services, and have it just be one sentence and we're done.
Can we add on to that, the place detail? Excuse, the place detail of coordinating...
I can go along with that.
Hear me out. Coordinating the transit services, because what we talked about in the work group is placing someone who, it is a service, but if you're, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, because part of it is place and not service. Access to places to work, places to shop, roads, places that go somewhere.
Yeah, I understand, but again, what Brian's trying to do here, Councilor Cook, is just get a broad, overreaching goal, and then all the recommended actions we got can fit under that goal, and that would include transit services.
I can live with it, let's move on.
So if we said, Salem will provide adequate housing supply and security for everyone regardless of economic situation or status with maximized access, resources, and services? Would that be close? Needs a little word smithing, but does that get to the concept?
Let's move on.
I'm nodding heads.
Does that mean me are behind me?
You're included in the experts, it was plural.
Okay, can I interpret absence of hostile glare as... That we're pretty close here. I recognize that there's a little, kind of some subordinate clause stuff going on there that needs to be worked on, but...
Oh, we're good.
Do we have the right stuff up there in the statement?
You let us?
Oh.
Outstanding, thank you.
Professor Moore, do you want to critique the work?
Terry Moore, Echo Northwest, we're going to be, I just want to mention an issue that's going to come up in all of these, and that is that what we're working on today is goals. Then we will work on actions, and then we will work on measurements, and eventually, as the council is well aware, we will eventually come to how are we going to fund all of this? And right now, I will say that you have probably added, perhaps substantially, to what you are now doing on housing, homelessness, and social services. So if we have a very broad statement, Brian, such as adequate housing for everybody, when we get to the point of making decisions about what are the programs going to look like and where are we going to find the money to do it, it will be more difficult at that point. I'm just pointing that out, and that to try to deal with housing for everyone, including moderate and high-income families, if your real focus is low-income, hearing that now would be the right thing to have in the goal statement.
Would a good alteration be to add adequate housing to address current needs? To address identified needs?
Or for those in need, would that get to what you're saying, Terry?
Yeah, I'm just making that comment, and I'm turning the process back over to you, Brian, I don't think this is my discussion, so...
Bob and the red.
Yeah. Brian, yeah, you're suggesting taking out everyone and putting those in need, because I think that really is our real focus. Even though there are problems at the top end of the market, that'll sort itself out. It's the bottom end that we're really concerned about.
Can we, in how we frame that issue, instead of saying those in need, can we move to address needs? Does anyone see a problem with framing it rather than saying those in need just to address needs?
I have to rewrite it.
I would prefer to stay focused on the people.
Okay.
And is that...
Does that mean we should change it, or we should leave it?
Yeah.
Okay. I feel confident that when the work group kind of takes another chump at this, they may want to fiddle with a word or two, but I think we're pretty close. So can I suggest we move forward into vision for growth and development?
Moving right along.
So, I want to encourage, within five minutes, summing up to a proposed overarching statement.
Okay. I already screwed up, I was supposed to do this one first, though, you know?
It was a happy accident.
We rolled with it, this is an accommodating group.
Issues, well, this is the growth group, and the issue that we came up with Salem's existing vision for growth and development is encompassed by the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, is out of date, has been developed over the years in a pie, been developed over the years in a piecemeal fashion that has resulted in disconnected ideas for how the city should grow. The existing vision also lacks awareness and ownership by the community. The goal is develop a comprehensive, long-term vision for future growth and development in Salem that has buy-in and ownership by the community.
Well done, Councilor McCoy.
You're asking doubt, okay. Yeah. I'm down under the average timeline now.
Can you repeat that last statement?
I knew I'd be bitter on this one. Develop a comprehensive, long-term vision for future growth and development in Salem that has buy-in and ownership by the community. And if I go into a summary of this... That's pretty cool how you did that.
And the markers.
Feedback on that as a suggested goal for what we're trying to accomplish under vision for growth and development.
Or does anybody want to fill in on background, or does that just get right to it?
Seems pretty good.
Yeah, I don't know if this is a question, a statement, or just being stupid. The idea of engaging the community, I don't know if it was specified, and it may be how we do that, maybe something that we deal with later, but I've always struggled, do we, do we listen to those that come down or send in letters and use that as a community's voice, or do we find a way to actually get widespread community involvement, like surveys, things like that? There's always been a question on my mind, we seem to tend to listen to the screams, but is that truly the total community's vision or not?
This is getting into the weeds a little bit, but one of the issues we discussed was to conduct a community-wide visioning program, and so the timeline would be one to three years, $100,000 to $200,000, with one to two staff members and a consultant, and it would be an outreach, very, you know, reaching out and finding all those people and getting an answer from a cross-section of the community, and making sure that what we have is pretty much as comfortable as we can be, what the community envisions this being in a general terms. And moving forward into that, the final thing was to update the comprehensive plan, and if we did that, this visioning would be part of that plan moving forward, which would be a four- to five-year process, and that would cost even more money.
Councilor Anderson.
Thanks. I want to respond to that in a different way. We're elected by the community, but part of the reason they elect us is because they listen to us talk and campaign, and in some respects, they trust our judgment to make decisions. We're not out there just polling the community on everything, we wouldn't need to have the councilors if that were the case. We're elected for our judgment, and this is a representative democracy, and so, you know, it's good to have input from everybody, but ultimately, each one of us has to decide what our view was of how we're going to move forward, and as part of that, we take input from the community, but we're the ones to make the decisions. That's why we got elected, and it's not necessary to say, you know, I'm saying this because, you know, this is what other people tell me, I'm saying this because this is what I think after looking at everything and making some reasoned decision. Now, having said that, I'm very, and I don't know where this goes, and I think it'll be, at some point, I may propose it as a separate goal, the whole climate change initiative, that kind of fits under here a little bit, but I think it's potentially something separate that, you know, you said, we don't want 23 goals, but we might want six, seven, or eight, and we're at six now, and, you know, I think that's something we're going to have to discuss at some point in here, because I think what has been presented is right, and there's some pretty good spade work that has already been done, that, you know, the five points are how we could move forward. So I think that should be a separate goal, but it kind of applies to how we develop our community.
Other thoughts, Councilor Cook?
So just to kind of put it out there, as well as Councilor Lewis was saying, one of, anyone who's been to a neighborhood association meeting, I'm sure all councilors can attest, what really brings people out of numbers is when there's a land use issue affecting your neighborhood, or people that live nearby, and that's where we tend to see the most tension, and especially if we're trying to address issues of livability, affordable housing, climate change, all of these issues, it's important that we know where we're going and that map is, so that we're not having the same arguments every time. So I think in part of this work group, part of developing the vision for growth and development, and the reason that we're looking at including the community in a comprehensive way in that process, is to make sure that we're not having to revisit every month or every time a new plan comes forward, what is our goal, what are we doing, how does this relate to the overall picture of the city? Once we have that larger outline in place, I think it'll help people to be confident when we're moving forward in action plans of what our goal is.
I'm hearing pretty much consensus that vision for growth and development as defined by, develop a comprehensive, long-term vision for growth and development in Salem that has buy-in from the community is a good goal. So let's keep going, because probably some of the others will be challenging.
Don't say it, Terry.
No, it's okay. Brian, we did say, at the end of the issue, give me a chance to say something, so I just want to say one thing.
That's it.
And I want to support what Councilor Anderson said, that if you think about this, and you try to think about what that vision would be, the connection, and I'm not saying that climate change is or is not the right idea, I'm going to just be agnostic on that right now, but if you do believe that it is the right idea, what you start, when you start thinking about climate change and what policies you would put together to address that, will almost certainly tie into your vision for the type of growth and development that you have. So you may have separate goals on this, but in the end, when we get to actions, I think you have to at least consider the possibility that you might want to link these together somehow.
Thank you.
Councilor McCoy?
I would add, that's a great point, and adding on to that in the discussion in this work group was, you know, this might be in some ways the groundwork, you almost have to develop what the growth and what you want the city to look like before you can go to the next step with these other areas and start layering back on, how they fit into that whole overriding concept of what you want the city to look like in the future as it grows, because what we decide now is going to define what the city looks like and how it develops, and this can impact all the decisions we make in the other work groups, so...
Councilor Cook, and then I'm going to move us on.
Is that your parking lot?
That, well, in the old days, old-school facilitators would call that a parking lot. That is my bike rack.
Is it your bike rack? Okay, good. So, in keeping with that, I would like to add child-friendly, city of all ages on there as well, on the bike rack, because I think those things are tied together, and we can talk about it later. City of all ages.
Children of all ages?
Well, you're self-included. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to economic development and downtown. Mayor, I think you're leading on that one.
I am. For economic development, we had a series of goals, I'll just run through them real quickly, is business recruitment, business retention and expansion, supporting and encouraging startups and entrepreneurialism, facilitating land supply and site readiness for industrial development and workforce development. Ultimately, our outcome was that the city identify and implement additional business support programs resulting in a higher level, or a higher survival rate for small businesses, growth of existing businesses, and attraction of new businesses. And then, of course, in economic development, there are about five pages of ways to do all this, of suggestions and ideas, a lot of which we've developed, but let's agree, they focus primarily on our urban renewal areas, as well as our relationship with the state of Oregon, with Business Oregon and SEDCOR.
Comments, thoughts on economic development in downtown?
The downtown piece?
I haven't finished downtown.
Oh, okay, okay. There's more.
No, this is two elements. Economic development isn't just downtown, we've been told. So let's go with that one. The goal is, as is pretty regularly stated, the city will have a vibrant downtown with low commercial vacancy rates and quality housing.
Sorry, can you say that again?
Yeah. The city will have a vibrant downtown with low commercial vacancy rates and quality And, again, this comes with a whole set of goals, increased assessed value, which pays for a lot of this through the Urban Renewal Agency, focusing on revitalizing the vacant second stories downtown, making sure downtown is a vibrant destination, not just a commercial center, but also a place to go spend money, and to be see, be seen, enjoy collegial companionship, et cetera. We want to create substantial housing downtown, improve alley activity, reduce freight traffic, increase downtown housing types and options, and also begin focusing outside of that core downtown into the north waterfront and north downtown.
So proposal, kind of for two goal statements here, and I guess that would be one question, is it the same goal, or is it two goals, but one about business support programs resulting in a higher survival rate for small business, growth of existing businesses, and attraction of new businesses, and a vibrant downtown with low vacancy and quality housing, low commercial vacancy and quality housing. Councilor Anderson?
Certainly sounds like two goals to me, and I say now we're up to eight if we adopt the climate change.
Yeah, I'll tell you, the problem is, it was presented as two goals.
Right, no, I understand that, I understand that, yeah.
So I think, and I think part of it is, you almost have to separate the two. There is a, there is a group in town that thinks you only think of downtown and commercial activity, but there's a more complicated discussion.
You mean the downtown people?
I think some of us who worry about the outlying areas think about.
Well, and on that point, and then I'll get back to the specific one, affordable housing, social security, and homeless, that fits together better than some of these other groups do. I just want to discuss the business progress and that sort of stuff, and I have to say that when I first came on the council, I had some concerns about how we're spending our time and energy chasing big corporations, and out-of-state corporations, and national corporations to get it to come here, which I think is, in a large sense, pretty futile and counterproductive in terms of the cost to the city eventually. But we had a meeting with SEDCOR, and SEDCOR pointed out, to my pleasant surprise, that they spend 85% of their energy and time and money on existing businesses, developing startups, doing things that focuses on what is happening here locally, and only 15% on chasing the out-of-state corporations, and the city does the same thing. So I think that's good, and I think we should continue to look at it that way, and I think the goals say it. I mean, it does say attraction of new businesses, but that's broad enough, so, as a goal, so new businesses could mean new businesses that are here in town, and/or, you know, local state businesses, as opposed to getting some international corporation come in. So I think that's a goal that I could support.
I'm suspicious that it wasn't inadvertent that the mayor said survival rate for existing businesses before he said attracting new. I'm sure that was deliberate in the committee.
Yeah, I think there's often a misconception about economic development, that people are hunting businesses all over the world or the nation, which is just not happening here. That is one of those myths that perpetuates itself in discussion, but isn't really the way.
Which is why I spoke to it.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Councilor, I really do. I think that's a much, it's certainly more descriptive of the experience I've had for the past 10 years.
Councilor Osick.
I would suggest that what we just talked about with development, as the mayor was saying, economic development is the same across the city, so perhaps just going back to our previous goal is a way of consolidating, so we don't have two goals for this, for this area.
You think the growth and development and the economic development are the same thing?
Yeah.
Boy.
I, I'm not so sure. There are, I think everything's related, so I can definitely see that, but I know for vision and growth and development, we were really looking at land use, and planning, and code along those lines, which would be tied into business, but I think there would be something lost if we combined those.
I think, Councilor, too, just a thought, that if you go into the reports on this in depth, you'll see the tools available for economic, what it talks about quite a bit are the kinds of tools you'll continue to use, that wouldn't be used in the standard growth model, the different kinds of.
What I'm reading is mostly what I would think of as actions, they're specific actions rather than overarching goals for the city.
I see what you're saying.
Developing the economy of the city may be different in downtown than is there, but that's a different action rather than a different goal. You still want the overall city's economic development to be planned, and have a strong vision, and be thought out, and like we were saying in the previous goal, regardless of where it's taking place, there may need to be, you know, in different urban renewal districts, you need different plans as well, whichever.
Yeah, I think the difference is downtown tends to have, actually, a different kind of, yeah, focus on it than some of our industrial areas, some of our more auto-oriented areas. It has a different kind of development strategy. It also has a pretty substantial housing component, and because of its concentration, its vacancy rate becomes a real factor in how you deal with it as well. I don't know, Kristin's here, she could talk about whether it's, could be incorporated into a broad strategy together. I think it could, I'm just not sure how to do it, I guess.
So when it comes to our business outreach and recruitment, we include downtown in that. Over the last year, we've started with other districts, and we really haven't started that outreach in the downtown area yet, but it is in our plans to do that into the future. But when we look at economic development, and we look at downtown, downtown, as you mentioned, is more broad in terms of the city's work that goes on downtown. As we look at our other economic development activities, those don't include the housing component, the streetscape component, and some of the elements that we become involved in as a city in the downtown. So in terms of how we would take those actions, they will be quite a bit different in the downtown than in other economic development activities. The kinds of businesses that go down, that are in the downtown, are very different than what we consider the kinds of businesses that we work with in economic development, because downtown is far more the retail, restaurant, and those aren't viewed under traditional economic development as the kinds of businesses that you focus those economic development activities on, which are more traded sector, higher-wage kinds of jobs, which isn't to say that those sorts of businesses in the downtown aren't important, that's not true at all. We want to see that vibrancy and those sorts of, that kind of business growth, but it's a different strategy and different focus than the rest of the economic development program.
So it sounds like you're saying, you said twice, actions and activities are different, but it sounds like the goal is still the same, you're still trying to create a vibrant economy in whatever part of the city you're working in.
That's correct, but the downtown just includes those additional goals of housing, mobility, things that we, that aren't maybe a part of the other economic development goals.
Director Rutherford, if we were to add, in addition to economic development, or in addition to economic, into the second goal, the vision for growth and development, would you see that as being separate or included in the larger goal? So develop a comprehensive, long-term vision for growth and development in addition to economic development, or in addition to economic renewal, or would you see that as overcomplicating, or what's your take? And I welcome your feedback, thank you.
So I was going to observe that it seems to me that the central theme in this one in the middle is about the physical form of the community, and the overarching thing of everything over on the right is about vitality.
Growth, development, and vitality?
Yeah, I can't look when you mix this up.
I understand, Councilor Osick, what you're saying, and if you are looking at it, if you want to look at it very high-level as a broad goal, I can see where you could add economic vitality into the second statement, and it would cover that. But I think you would then, as you move into the actions, you would start parsing out then to those actions tied to the land use, the zoning, what's on the ground versus the actions that you take for economic development.
Well, let me just say, it seems like I'm in the minority here, so let's, well, I don't mind moving on, but I do disagree with what you're saying, like, I think that you want a citywide goal, not just a goal for one particular area.
We do fundamentally disagree, Councilor.
Because then, I could argue I should have, my area should have a goal for its development, you know, which it kind of does in the urban renewal district, which downtown has as well, you know, so.
I just wanted to say that, I think we want to be careful that we don't dilute our goals either, though, by throwing so much stuff into it that it becomes, you know, it becomes less meaningful than having more specific ones. I think the second one is more of that physical growth and land use, is what it seems the work group was focused on, and the business in downtown, yes, you could see it as being more actionable types, but it's talking about economic vitality, and downtown, we have one downtown, so as a city, it's, it is different than other areas, but I do agree with Director Rutherford, it's got, it's going to implement those things in different ways.
But you're right. Why don't you just put "and" vibrant downtown with low vacancy and quality housing and be done with it? Does the suggestion that this is about the physical form, land use, and that collection of stuff is about vitality, does that resonate, that those are kind of subject, and I'm not hearing really pushback on the wording of either one, but it's about sort of the organizing principle?
Yeah, I think what Councilor Osick, if I understood it, is looking at the kind of investment and strategies used downtown, used in Highland neighborhood, in, you know, northeast, and out on Lancaster, and God knows, on South Commercial it needs it, so, you know, it's that kind of, is that what you're thinking, sort of, that?
Yeah, it's, the same kind of plans can be used to ever.
So it'd be like commercial nodes, or something like that, or?
Right, something like, but, you know, the general idea was more to just try to consolidate, because there are, I think there is something different about the third area, but you had two things, and trying to find a way to get something out of it, so you have one thing left, so.
Well, I'd like to see that parking lot have at least the concept of commercial localities, or something like that.
Bike rack.
So I would suggest that you agree that you want to have a vision for Salem's physical form, and that you agree that you want Salem to be a vital place, and that you have quite a collection of activities that are ambitions to that, that'll need to get reconciled with available resources, but I'm feeling sort of clarity about that, and it's, I feel it's almost like the headline that we need to get straight on, because I'm not really hearing any, I mean, I think if we said, you know, a vital Salem, and then we said business support programs resulting in higher survival rate for small businesses, growth of existing businesses, attraction of new businesses, including a vibrant downtown with low vacancy and quality housing, there's a lot of words in that, but I'm not hearing anybody disagreeing with anything that it says in there.
Again, looking at this from another angle, I think goals are real easy, it's implementing, and that's where we're really going to have the problem, and we're, I mean, you know, vision for growth and development, and when we start to look at the goals of that, we're going to have more discussion and more issues than if we all say we want it to develop and grow, and then the question is, how do we want it to develop and grow, so.
That's, I think, I think, I think you're absolutely right, that's going to be really hard, and I think that's why the goal is to develop a vision for Salem's physical form.
That's right, that's right, that's exactly right. We want the goals, the goals need to be as broad, and when we establish that, we can then get to the, to the details that are, the tactics that are going to be harder, and I'm taking over for Terry Moore here as the downer at the end of the discussions.
Oh, he'll step back in.
Yeah.
So can I, can I title this one, "A Vision for Salem's Physical Form"? Does that help make it a little more clear, and then leave the statement as it is?
Perfect.
Terry, you want to weigh in?
Actually, just to say, I think everything seems like it's on the right track. A brief comment, the notion of sustainability is, take, fundamentally is, look at everything over the long run. So it includes everything, and whether you, there are many doors, but you will end up in the same room. Whether you enter through land use, economic development, climate change, or transportation, you can't solve one problem without solving the other. That said, I do think it makes sense to separate out the goals, and just be aware when you get to the implementation, that some of these goals may end up getting into an integrated process when you're doing your actions.
I have to say, as a facilitator, this is the strangest experience, I'm writing up here, and there's a speaker right behind this thing, I've never had the wall graphic talking back to me while I was trying to. I think we have consensus on these three, which makes me very happy, because that means we're right on schedule, and why don't we, why don't we take a short break, because we've got at least three more? It is 10 o'clock, let's get back together at 10:10 by that clock. Okay, I think we have a quorum again. Thank you all, and apologies for the break being a little longer than I suggested, it took me longer to get my act together than I thought. So I think we had a very productive discussion during the first section here, and we arrived at a lot of clarity around three broad overarching goals related to housing, and homelessness, and community services, about Salem's physical form. and community services, about Salem's physical form, and about economic vitality. I heard, during the break, I heard some question about whether or not we really got clarity around housing and homelessness, or if it's kind of several thoughts cobbled together. I think that's a fair question, and I'm going to suggest we revisit it after we've gotten through the other goals, because I'm afraid it might take a long time to get there, I don't want to go there next. The other comment I got during the break that I thought was worth addressing was, these are pretty broad and generic visions for what we're trying to do. Are we going to get to more specifics, or when are we going to get to more specifics? I think that's a fair question. I would remind everybody that there was a briefing document that was the notes from all of the work groups, where there are plenty of specifics. And our purpose today is agree on broadly what are we trying to accomplish, so that those work groups have an opportunity to get some feedback from the whole council about where we're going, and then we can try and pull that forward into specifics in terms of actions and measures before the plan is finished. That's the next phase of the work, is getting down to those specifics. The purpose of this work session is to agree broadly on what are the goals. Terry, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I'll just be brief on that. They, I think a lot of people have been through a process like this. It's often set up that we go from goals to sub-goals to objectives, and then go into actions. A different way to get there, since it is actions that really matter, is to go from broad goals to your actions, and then from your actions, you infer what your sub-goals must have been. And I think that is probably the process that we are working with. The way we're set up right now is that the work group will next go to the actions, and as they do, they've got, they've got a pretty broad range to work with, but as they start getting specific about actions, I think the sub-goals will show up. And even though, two things, even though what's written up there is short, there was a discussion here that was longer, and even more in, as you point out, Brian, in the memoranda. So that is, that is the process now, so if people are concerned that this will remain high-level and vague, it's a good concern to have, but we're aware of that, and we know that we have to get to actions.
And so then we have three more categories to go through before we kind of step back and say, have we covered the whole gamut? Critical infrastructure, sustainable service delivery, and public transportation. And I just want to remind everybody that ultimately, we are trying to get to a comprehensive strategic plan with a set of sub-goals and actions and measures, and that has to incorporate into a, it has to intersect with the city's budget. So, you know, as we get to the end of this, we have to say, you know, ideally what we're trying to accomplish is, what can we accomplish within our resources? And so that sustainable service delivery, that's a key component, as we make sure we infuse reality into this. We have to do that before this planning process is complete. So that's where we are. Let's wade into critical infrastructure. Looks like Counselor Nanki is going to lead that one.
Thanks, wonderful day to be inside, or not. Critical infrastructure, Director Fernandez and Nemburi kind of led our discussion. Counselors Osick, Kizer, Lewis, and myself were members of the work group. Mr. Slater, who testified a little bit earlier, actually, it was nice to have a member of the public at our work group meeting. I got a lot of good feedback and a lot of interaction during the meeting as well. So I think we all know kind of what the deal is with infrastructure. We have a lot of it. We don't have a lot of money to fund it. In our budget committee process, I think we only deal with it with the addition of some monies for sidewalks. That being said, we kind of look through, because some things you might not really consider, infrastructure, but they really are. And then all of those major systems have master plans associated with them. I've never seen an IT master plan. We always see the transportation systems' master plan as they move towards us as well. There's a lot of master plans. I bet if you stacked them up, you'd have a pretty tall stack of papers. So from a goal perspective, simplify and streamlining the master planning process, and if I recall, to better align with council and community goals, to better align those to infrastructure funding. Some of our infrastructure has dedicated pots of money, some has none. You know, as far as recommendations for down the line, how we pay for some of those, and how we budget inside of the city budget, to have line items to deal with, taking care of the stuff we have, because we all know that the longer you don't take care of something, it turns into a capital project. Whereas if you take care of, say, your streets, or your house, or, you know, any issue that is put off, you go for replacement rather than upkeep, and the cost is immense when you get down the line. And, you know, the age of our city, and the amount of infrastructure in it, we're getting to the point where we have 100-year-old infrastructure underneath, and it's not visible most of the time, but it is when you got a pipe break, and you see a nice water spout coming up and road shut down, so.
So simplify and streamline master planning to better align with the community goals and infrastructure funding. Catch your way. You said?
Council and community goals, to better align council and community goals to infrastructure funding. And then the second sentence in that, map master plan strategies and goals to appropriate adopted master plans, so connecting the strategic plan then to master plans inside of the city where appropriate.
Counselor Nanki, I just wanted to add on, because I was part of the group as well, it was simplify and streamline the city's infrastructure master planning, that, clarifying for infrastructure.
And that's, that's a lot of words as well. Based on how the, this was set up after our meeting, and how to put that in better, I'm sure there is better wording for that.
When you say streamlining, I mean, it sounds good, but are you talking about shortening the time windows? I mean, is that what you're saying?
No.
We're going to plan for five-year cycles of funding, or 10-year, 20, 30? What do you, what do you mean by streamlining?
We have a lot of master plans. Is there a way to actually take all of these master plans, simplify that whole process, and reduce the amount of paper inside of them as well? Are there master plans that we can combine? Can we look at them from a different perspective? And master plan elements that are common across a, a bunch of different ones?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just not sure what the point is. I'm still, paper reduction is always a worthwhile goal, I guess, but I'm trying to understand if it results in a better funding strategy, or a better maintenance strategy. What's it do? I'm just not quite catching it at all. I just wanted to hear a little more about it.
Can I, can I add on?
Sure.
Is that all right? I'm just looking at the write-up. So the things we talked a lot about were developing criteria for infrastructure maintenance and prioritization, that the, how those things would be reviewed and processed, because it sounds like we don't, we don't really have that now. It's not like a, it's not looked from a overarching viewpoint. Like, when you have projects, how do you prioritize those, and what's the criteria around it? So we talked about that, and we talked about tying those things to, okay, what do we have available now for funding? So you have prioritized projects, and then the funding.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I, did, you guys then went over the CIP development process and found that wanting in its criteria for developing what goes on to the five-year plan?
Well, again, you have to have the funding to put it into the CIP.
Well, no, no, I understand the funding. Funding is a whole separate issue. I don't think you've even begun with that. I'm trying to understand what, what it is you're trying to do here. I just not, I'm just not catching it. We've got a CIP process with criteria.
We could actually just totally obliterate the entire front-end of that, and it basically prioritized infrastructure, repair and replacement, so.
Part of the, part of the point that we were, when we were talking about was to make it transparent. So when we, even as council, when we asked for how was the priority developed by the staff, it's some formula that, that we don't have as much input into. It's something that's decided for us, so what we talked about was having direct input from the community and the council into how the prioritization criteria were developed, and make that a part of the thing.
I've seen that done, I guess, and I thought it was, I guess nobody asked the right question, but I, let's get Fernandez down here and explain what's going on.
Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. I think Counselor Osick said it well, and Counselor Kizer, there was a lot of discussion about this issue, that, you know, the understanding that there is a lot of infrastructure, a lot of valuable infrastructure, a lot that has to be maintained, but, but how exactly are those decisions made? So it was really just a, I don't want to use the word transparency, but I, you know, I haven't, I've only had one cup of coffee, so can't think of a, of a better word. You know, it's more of a, of a process to really understand, you know, how that's done. And Mayor, you talked about the CIP, so there's the capital piece, but then there's also the maintenance piece.
Yeah.
And a lot of the discussion in the group was, was, you know, maintenance is kind of buried, there aren't maintenance line items in the budget.
Yeah.
So, so really, a better understanding of bringing that forward is, where is the maintenance of infrastructure in the budget?
Okay.
You know, and how is that brought forward? Perhaps even, not so much because there's anything nefarious going on, but to highlight, you know, the need for, for this maintenance, and highlight how much needs to be spent, and how much is being spent on maintaining the existing infrastructure.
Okay, yeah. I just worry, as I listen to it, I get a little nervous that we're going to highly politicize the infrastructure process, and suddenly it's, parts of town get better serviced than other parts of town, and I have felt like you've kept it somewhat more evenly distributed. This could really result in a, that, my worry is, doesn't sound like that's what these guys have in mind.
I don't think that was the, as the, as the facilitator of the group, I don't think there was any intent of, of that nature.
My trip caution, Matt, that's not a good way to go.
Basically, we want to keep things off the CIP, because we've been maintaining them, and you don't have to, so, and people don't get to see that. It's like, if we spent more on maintenance here, how, how much more money could we save for the taxpayers in the long run as well?
Counselor Hoyt?
So I wasn't on this work group, but what I'm, what it sounds like, what everybody's trying to say is, we're talking about a process improvement from development and visioning of these process, of these different processes, and in order to facilitate better communication with the community and the council, because I think sometimes, and to get to what Counselor Osick was saying, sometimes we, he used the term transparency, but I think it's also just not, maybe not just transparency, but it's just awareness. I don't think, I don't think it's very easy to figure out what, what our priorities are, and how we get them to actually implementation. I think that people who are, I think the staff is excellent at that, because they're involved in it every day, but it's not transparent, because it's not easy for maybe council, new council members especially, I can speak for myself, and the community.
I can see the new council problem, yeah, okay. You know, it is hard to get through this stuff.
Counselor Anderson?
Well, there's, I can't say there's an older council problem, but there's a middle council problem, and that's what, I would, yeah. I'm not talking age, I'm talking about years of service. But the, the thing that I see that relates just to what Counselor Hoyt says is education. I don't think the public is really aware that we've got all these issues, and we need to address them, because as Counselor Nanki says, you don't know there's a problem with the sewer pipes until one in your neighborhood, you know, burst. And, and I really think that we've got to make the city aware that this is a critical need for us, and we need to do it now, or start now, rather than wait till everything falls apart, and then what are we going to do? So education of public, I think, is important here.
Just want to add really quick, something else we talked about was having a general obligation bonding strategy, because it seemed like maybe that's not something the city currently has, is when we decide to go out for a bond, you know, why, and what's, what are their priorities, what's the criteria around that? And especially for, if that bond fails, how do we respond to that? You know, do we go out again? Do we look at why it failed? What's the process for even doing that? Does one exist? Or is it just kind of a, that failed, and what should we do? Is there actually something that's, that somebody could look at and say, you know, okay, if it meets certain criteria, we're going to try to go out again, if it doesn't, then we're going to let that go.
Sorry.
So we talked about that also. I just have a quick question. Everybody get this report?
No.
Critical infrastructure report?
No.
Okay, so this is explaining maybe some of the.
Well, it's in the write-up. What I sent out to the members is the exact same text that's in the write-up in the staff report under critical infrastructure.
Because I didn't see one on the Legistar website for critical infrastructure. Okay.
That's okay, we can put it out.
Counselor McQuaid?
So, back to the goal. We're having a good discussion here. I don't understand why simplify and streamline are in the, in the goal. I'm not sure, I heard all, I understand everything you guys told me, I'm not sure how that, that then gets us to simplify and streamlining the process, unless there's a problem with the process that we haven't discussed yet.
Did Counselor Nanki say to strike the first part of the sentence?
You're good, and just, I mean, we want to better align master planning, or master plans with council and community goals, and funding, so.
So, so I'm hearing, and maybe, maybe this, what you really mean is that, that you want to better align infrastructure master planning with council and community goals?
Yeah.
Would it seem like there was something in there about it?
Funding is the big issue. Whether or not funding should have been in that, what it is.
It seemed like there was something in there about communication and education, though, that didn't, that didn't quite capture.
It almost seems like the vision for growth and development, that sort of overarching, you know, develop a comprehensive, long-term vision, develop a simplified plan, master plan, to better align for community goals through.
Brian, I agree about the simplify and streamline, just say, develop a master plan without an adjective, but I do want to talk to the funding and the, how do we pay for this issue? That, that goes more to the, what I'm going to speak to at the next, at the next session, the next goal we start to talk about.
How about better align and clarify infrastructure planning and funding with council and community goals? Better align and clarify infrastructure planning and funding with council and community goals.
I like it.
Wait, wait, wait. What's the, what is the planning cycle on some of these infrastructure projects? I mean, I'm looking at that water system, and is it 100 years, because you've got 100 year pipe failing right now, or what is the?
Yeah, in some cases, you know, the difficulty with, and we talked a little bit about this, so the difficulty with quote-unquote "critical infrastructure" is, there's a lot of it, and it comes in many varieties, and many different funding sources. So, right, so in the water system, you know, the, the planning cycle is, you know, 50 to 100 years. In the transportation system, it's 20 years. We had a suggestion that we added that even trees are part of our infrastructure. You know, we, we plant them, we maintain them, we own them.
And we cut them down, don't we?
Right, so those are, well.
You tear up streets sometimes, too.
Some trees last, you know, 15 years, some trees last nine. Some trees last, you know, 15 years, some trees last 100, you know, 100, 200 years. I mean, it really, it's, it's a wide variety. And so, so one of the discussions that we had is, is that, uh, rather than talk too much about funding, because funding was coming up in another group, that we talk more about the planning and the, you know, how do we get there? And then there's even kind of two parts of it. There's the capital piece, you know, the CIP and, and with these master plans and the maintenance piece. And so, so there's, you know, there's kind of, you know, these various things, but what, what came about was more awareness. I think Counselor Hoy had a, had a great word. You know, more awareness of how this maintenance is done. And then, and then even in, in a, in a bonding strategy, and we've had bonding strategies in the past, uh, I don't recall in the time that I've been here that we've actually advertised those bonding strategies or gotten feedback. We've gotten feedback when we're ready to issue a bond, but I don't recall having a whole lot of discussion in the community about, hey, this is the way it lays out. You know, police in May, library in November, two years from now X, four years from now Y, you know, and so forth. So, so having that broad-based discussion and then the discussion of, so what if one of those fails? You know, then do we just move on to the next one? Do we bring the same one back?
Does everything?
You know, so having that, that, and, and criteria based. So not just because we think it's right, but, you know, we started to have some discussion about, uh, is it because, you know, it failed by a little bit, or its criticality, or was the wrong thing? So, so there was a lot of that kind of discussion on those different topics.
Seems to me that the operative thing in the discussion here is about clarity or helping build understanding, you know, and, and, and you clearly aren't going to align 100-year planning cycles with three-year community goals. But it might be the other way around. The goals have got to align. But, but so it feels like more illuminating this and helping everybody understand it, partly because that'll help you make long-term decisions, which are always hard to make.
I look to my members to, to agree with that.
I mean, if you look at water, sewer per se, I mean, we're trying to actually build that into the system, that everything gets replaced on a 100-year cycle. You can't do that with streets because the, the money isn't there.
Right.
So how do you look long-term at all the different infrastructure categories that we have? Some we'll be able to take care of, some, there's just no money. So how do you actually figure out funding so we can take care of everything?
Well, and if we, if we clarify this and, and get the community more involved, I think it'll increase buy-in ultimately and, and that's going to,
Oh, yeah.
it's going to help with everything.
Especially in the bonding strategy. But, you know, if you do any kind of funding, you need to match it up somehow to the infrastructure that, so there's a rational nexus. Um, a lot of people said they were willing to pay more taxes in the community surveys. So, they tend to not like to pay more taxes when it's wandering over to something that doesn't necessarily connect in their, their heads to it.
I'm feeling kind of okay support for better align and clarify emphasis or, uh, infrastructure planning and funding with council and community goals if we put the emphasis on the clarify.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Lot of nodding heads around that.
I hope the next group then, then also puts the emphasis on funding.
Throw maybe a small wrench, not a wrench, a good, a good wrench. If we could put, prioritize as well. So it'd be like better align, clarify and prioritize infrastructure planning and funding with council and community goals. Because I think, I think it's important you, you can have clarity and alignment, but it's also which ones do you decide to do also?
Boy. I, just let me try, I'll let me toss another wrench into that one then. We've had that here for years, for decades, for centuries in Salem. The result was, uh, the priority was not to raise water rates. The result was a water rate, a water system that was in deep, deep trouble about 20 years ago, and we had to steadily, and you will continue to have to raise water rates for years to keep up with it. I mean, those are the kinds of things where you make short-term decisions, political decisions. Our grandparents or parents made political decisions on this city council not to raise water rates because it was a much better political place to be. And the result was an unfunded water system that began exploding downtown, shooting geysers. So I, I worry a little about this stuff where it gets, we get too short-term in our vision and we don't, I, I like your idea of the funding and all that, but it's, it's how do you, how do you not let that happen again? That, that really troubled me as I began to understand that about 10 years ago, what those people did. You know, it's, boy, they used to do it with no taxes. Well, yeah. They, they took the, they, they spent the seed corn to do it.
Well, if I could just quickly respond, I, I don't think prioritize necessarily means a political component. I mean,
It does, though, when you do.
You have to make decisions about what goes first. And those can be good decisions or bad decisions. So it's, it's a neutral, I feel, it's a word. Because at some point you have to say, we're going to do this now, yes. Um, you, everything's not, not the same.
Yeah.
You can't do everything at one time. So that's, that's all I was trying to get at is,
Yeah.
how do you, how do you figure out which one right now you do?
It's, I think if everybody acted with, with good sense and goodwill, your, your plan is absolutely correct. But, but let's just assume there are people who will act with other motives on this council, not this council, of course, but the next.
The hypothetical council.
Counselor Anderson?
Well, I think this discussion has just highlighted what I've come to realize working on the council is that the vast majority of what we as council members do is to take care of the city. We're not, and in that sense, it's not political, it's not philosophical. The other part of that is, and we all know various issues that we've had disagreements about here in the council, but this is what we do. We keep, take care of the city. And, you know, there really, with taking care of the infrastructure we already has, have, to me, that's not so much a political discussion. That's just a discussion of a practical discussion is how do we do it? And, um, and so I appreciated both sides of the comment because we want to keep the, the, let's, let's look at short-term political gain for anybody here when, in reality, what we're doing is we're causing long-term problems for the city over a long period of time. And this is an area where we should be looking at the long-term and, and maintaining and keeping things rather than how am I going to get re-elected?
Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, just a real quick one. Again, uh, in our recommendations, we talked to that prioritization, uh, develop criteria for infrastructure maintenance prioritizations reviewed and endorsed by council. So, um, again, the meat in this is really inside of the recommendations. I'm not so concerned about the, the overriding goal, save for the fact that it means we're looking at the system and recognizing that we have a serious problem with deferred maintenance, um, and that we're working to address that.
Right, how to fix it, yeah.
Counselor Cook?
So, um, I really appreciate this dialogue as it relates to long-term plans for the city and the future of residents and infrastructure. But just to speak to Counselor Kizer and her suggestion, uh, I almost saw that it aligned to what Counselor Osick was saying with the clarity and illumination. So these things are being prioritized because we have a limited amount of funds. And, um, we do have to, as Counselor Anderson said, take care of the infrastructure, take care of, um, our obligations. So just in keeping with the spirit of Counselor Kizer's suggestion, um, how would we feel about saying better align and clarify priorities among infrastructure planning? Because I'm remembering when we first convened as a council, part of the, part of, um, the spirit and the collegial atmosphere is being able to explain both sides. Not everything can be a priority at once. Some things have to come before others. And when we do make decisions, being able to say, this is why we did it. This is our priority. And not, as the mayor said, not relying on because I want to get X, Y, and Z for me, but because it is in the long-term strategy, the strategic planning for the city. I second what, or I guess we're not in emotion, but I thoroughly agree and support what Counselor Kizer was saying, that prioritization and being able to have a public vehicle for that. So people understand why some improvements are being put before others, um, is reasonable. So people can see that.
So I heard that maybe we would say better align and clarify infrastructure priorities and funding with council and community goals. Counselor Osick?
Okay. Um, I'm fine with that. But what I was going to say is while I agree with what you're both saying, I, I can also see that if you're saying you're aligning your, your funding with your goals, then that, that goals kind of captures where you're prioritizing things. Hopefully your city goals or community goals or whatever.
Your priority.
That's, that's where you're deciding, if you're aligned with those, you're prioritizing, hopefully.
Thanks.
I feel like we're kind of there. We're now sort of moving words around in, in a statement with, I think with, the word priority belongs in there somewhere.
Yeah. And I, I, that's, I mean, I'm, that's totally agreeable to me. And I just have to share one quick thing I heard last week, this quote that today's solutions are tomorrow's problems.
Yay.
With that cheerful summary.
Why are we doing this?
Stop now. Terry, do you have a thought on this one?
What, I think what I heard from all the discussion and from Peter Fernandez is that is consistent with what you've got there. And at a broad high level, that's probably a good statement. But the, the report that you're referring to, the working group report, and then what you will then expand on that report, you've already got some ideas about how to proceed. And as, and it sounds to me like those ideas are consistent with what you're talking about. I mean, they're mainly emphasizing the, the importance of paying attention to what has been deferred maintenance and making sure that you're, you know, you're taking care of all that. And so there's some process issues that you're going to be working with to get back to the, to the mayor's point. I don't know exactly what it is, but it's, I think the committee is saying there can be some improvements to the process that we have for making these decisions. And the word prioritization came up and other things like that. So I, I feel like that statement with what the work you've already done sets you up for then expanding on, you know, where you want to go with that.
Okay, very good. Let's move forward. Um, sustainable service delivery. Counselor Anderson?
Well, I have to say that I signed up for this group because I thought it was sustainability. Um, I didn't rea-
[laughter]
I didn't realize you were going to be-
Nanner, Nanner.
Yeah. Um, but I think that, uh, this is a good segue from the last discussion we had upon, um, the long-term needs of the city, because that's what we're looking at here. And as part of our discussion and our group was, was, uh, Mayor Bennett, Counselor McCoy, Counselor Cook, and I, and Casey Duncan was our staff person. And we also got very good input from Chief Niblock. And this was all at a Friday evening, like 5:30 to 7:00. So you think Saturday morning is bad. Um, so here is the definition of sustainability that, uh, we talked about, um, at our meeting, which is more than just financial sustainability. And it is sustainability is defined as a requirement of our generation to manage the resource base such that the average quality of life that we ensure ourselves can potentially be shared by all future generations. And, um, you know, we talked about taking care of our children and grandchildren, but I think this is a pretty good statement. Um, and, um, I know that we've had discussions about the sustainability that I thought we were going to be discussing. And, and we're hopefully going to be moving forward in another area with some templates and, and filters to look at that sort of, that particular issue. So, um, the issue that we had was the council's general fund has a structural imbalance between revenues and expenditures, precluding the city's ability to sustain current or new services. Well, duh.
It only took us a half hour to get it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Says the attorney.
Uh, yeah, that was a legal term there. Uh, and, and here's the example. Um, this is based on, uh, the fiscal, uh, 2017 year. Our total estimated revenues is $113.5 million. Our total estimated expenditures is $116.5 million. So we're pretty close, but we're not there. And that's, that's the real problem. And sort of, we did a little interesting exercise. And, uh, if we increase the revenue from 113.5 to 116.5 million dollars, that would be equivalent to $5.90 per month fee to each utility customer. And utility customers an easy way to measure things because utility customer means single-family homes, apartments, commercial, retail, um, every, you know, anybody that hooks up, any entity that hooks up to utility. So, uh, you know, that's, you know, that's one way to look at it. And then how do we get there? Um, so our goal is to ensure fiscal sustainability and provide for improved services by aligning resources with the cost of services and maintaining an adequate fund balance. Then, um, we had some recommendations and we clearly, uh, we've got to identify the services and levels of service we desire to sustain and then methods to generate the funding necessary. Or we've got to reduce the cost. I mean, it's clear, either you, you know, uh, uh, reduce the cost required to produce those services. So either we get more income, we become more efficient, or we start cutting things. And I have to say that, um, the middle goal of becoming more efficient, you know, that's what the staff has been doing all along for a long time. And so I, I, I think the two realistic ones are increased revenues or decreased expenditures. Um, so, uh, solutions to achieving this stability may require trade-offs, reduced programs, or new and increasing revenue sources. So the recommended action we had were assign a revenue committee to explore new potential funding mechanisms and revenue sources. And again, we don't need to get down into those, but we had a number of potential suggestions that could be looked at. Um, the next one is to review fees charged for services and the adequacy of recovered cost. Again, we had a bunch of, um, ways to look at that. And I'll just point out that I think everybody knows that in the future, near future, we're going to be talking about SDC charges and, and an overall, um, a review of that. And I'm going to be chairing that committee along with Counselor McCoy and a bunch of, uh, some people from the planning commission and people from the community. Um, and then we have to determine whether services can be conducted in a more cost-effective or efficient manner. And, you know, despite what I said about how the, um, city staff does a very good job at this now, there are still other things we can do that relate to consolidation and, and, um, stuff we can get from IT, uh, Christian Umbery, that will help us, uh, improve our processes and that sort of stuff. But that's our report.
Fairly direct and straightforward thing is we need to align resources with costs through a series of step. Feedback or comments on that?
Did, I'm just curious. Did you, because of our, just our previous discussion, uh, it sounds like you were talking kind of about the operational deficit. Did you also talk more about the, um, kind of the structural shortfall dealing with the, uh, maintenance and, and that whole issue area?
Counselor Cook's nodding her head, so she can talk about that.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Yes, we did address that. Um, and I know, um, Casey, who led the work group, we mentioned that as well, the maintenance shortfall, the between 300 to 400,000 that was left out of the original slides,
Okay.
that was presented to council. It, it's a systems, once we correct the system.
It looks like Casey Duncan might be getting ready to talk while he comes down. I think we also, my remembrance of the discussion was, we mentioned the whole bonding thing in the revenue committee and, and, um, you know, we knew the work that they were doing and- in the revenue committee, and, you know, we knew the work that they were doing, and, you know, when we say assign a revenue committee to do this, we weren't necessarily saying it should be this revenue committee or a finance, excuse me, it should be the finance committee, or it should be some other committee that talks about. Okay, Casey, I'm sorry. Maybe sit down.
No, I think you covered what I was going to mention, that these are all integrated into one another when you look at critical infrastructure. That's obviously an area where we need to explore what that gap is, and part of this analysis is identifying the gap to meet the needs, and then determining what resources may be available or what costs may have to be reduced in order to fund that gap. So we didn't get into, you know, we were focused on the overall goal, but infrastructure is obviously a large part of meeting the community's needs, and the focus was more related to the general fund in our discussions.
This isn't your energy fund, it's talking about ideals and stuff that you want to do.
That's controversial. Steve, Counselor McCoy said it's not as controversial, but I'll tell you, it will be when we talk about what are we gonna cut, or how are we gonna raise revenues, and, you know, there's only a limited, it's not a panoply of choices, it's just a few things that we're gonna have to look at. Yeah, panoply, Steve, I put that word in there for you.
That's a power play right there.
Our own, our own William F. Buckley over there.
So I hear, I hear strong consensus that it's a no-brainer that you gotta do this. So then my question back to you would be, how are we gonna make sure that we do this at the same time we're making long lists of ambitions?
So I see this as, as a big-picture person, these are all relatable. So if we're doing critical infrastructure and not providing for the maintenance costs, if we're doing affordable housing, but they're short-term solutions at long-term expense, or we're doing a vision for growth and development that doesn't accommodate the long-term needs of our community, or if we're leaving out the economic vitality piece of it, this all speaks to sustainability, because as Counselor Hoy said earlier, it's not just about the services, ultimately it boils down to the people. It's got to be resident-focused so that, you know, we still have breathable air, drinkable water, places to live, places to go, places to work, for our kids, for the next generation. It's this bigger picture.
Anybody else want to say anything before we move on? All right, we are right on schedule, good for us. In fact, maybe a little ahead of schedule, we were so succinct on that one that nobody wanted to talk about. Terry, did you have anything you want to say about fiscal sustainability?
Oh, keep this moving.
The economist is in favor of fiscal sustainability as well. So that moves us into public transportation. Counselor Kazer.
Thanks. So our public transportation work group, it was, see, the mayor and myself, Counselor Lewis, and Counselor Hoy, and Julia Warnicki, Transportation Planning Manager, led the group, and we also had Alan Pollak there with chariots, too. So, so the issue we were looking at was, from the situation assessment, there was one finding regarding public transportation, and that was, the city does not have a public transportation system that adequately serves residents. And we explored that as what, as the city, could we do, what role could we play, and the roles that we looked through, kind of the lens, was city as owner, operator, and planner of infrastructure, the city as a regulator, the city as an employer, and the city council as an influencer. And then we discussed those things through six approaches, and those were addressing transit needs and project planning, reviewing development requirements, renewing agreements with transit regarding operations in the right-of-way, revisiting employee incentives, and supporting transit funding proposals. So as the city, those are things that, large things that we might be able to do. From that, the goal, recommended goal is partner with chariots in their efforts to fund and provide a public transportation system that meets the needs of the community through the city's role as owner of public infrastructure that supports public transportation, so that's streets, sidewalks, and bike facilities, as the city's role as a regulator of development, through the city's role as a large employer, and through the city's role as a community leader. And from that goal, we talked about a few recommended action items, and those were having a board and council joint work session to identify common interests, a joint work session with the chariots board to identify common interests, updating the intergovernmental agreement between the city and chariots to address how transit operates in the city right-of-way, particularly as it relates to location of stop shelters and associated parking regulations, having the city initiate broader coordination with all involved governments, so this would be Marion County, Kaiser, Polk County, Salem, the state of Oregon, and chariots, reviewing development regulations, and as appropriate, propose amendments that impact the ability of transit to provide effective service. And we talked about recommended action item funding, identifying possible roles for city involvement in future transit funding, and lastly, considering bringing back a subsidy and identify funding for employee bus pass as a tool to encourage employee use of public transportation, and that would be specifically for City of Salem employees.
Response? Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I wanted to add one thing, and I think it's implied in a couple of these recommended actions, but I remember the discussion, at least at the first meeting, how important it was to follow the current legislation at the state of Oregon when it comes to transit services, and to put ourselves in a position to be familiar and lobby for those benefits that could come from the state legislation.
And you'll be voting on that on Monday evening, so something to look forward to.
Counselor Nagy.
There's something different in the goal statement here, and it's, we're calling out another entity by name in a goal. So as far as partnering with chariots, partnering with, I mean, it could be anybody, it could be partnering with the cab companies, or the transportation network companies, or, you know, bus service, something we don't even have or know of yet. I'm just uncomfortable with actually having another government listed in our goal.
But I think that's exactly what we're talking about, that we're talking about the bus service, and the chariots are the provider of our bus service.
But if we're talking about public transportation, it's not just the bus. If we want to improve options for people to move around town, could be the bike kiosks.
Counselor Anderson.
Well, Uber and Lyft don't need our help, I think. I'm scared of those guys.
Never get in a car with a stranger, is that your-
Yeah, yeah. I would tend to agree on the discussion here between Ward Six and Ward Three, I would go with Ward Six, because that's what we've got, you know, and maybe we can add an alternative and other providers or something, but chariots is, you know, that's our bus service, and we're never gonna, and the bus service is one that has the potential to move the most number of people, so I think we should keep it in. Now, as an aside, I just want to note that Counselor Hoy, and Counselor Kazer, and I rode our bikes to this meeting today, and I'm, I'm looking to the day when all eight counselors and the mayor ride their bikes.
Well, our, the virtue signaling is over, let's move on.
Counselor Cook.
So just as a point of clarification, in looking at transportation options versus public transit, public transit is publicly operated, so maybe to help bring, I think, what Counselor Nagy is referring to, including something along the lines with Amtrak, although I don't know if we have a vehicle for interaction with them, because the steps about the intergovernmental agreements, or initiating leadership or regulations, I don't think we would be able to have that same interaction with an agency like Amtrak, but they are another transit entity that is inside our region, if that makes sense, as opposed to point-to-point driver in separate vehicles, which would qualify as a transit option, but I don't know if I would clarify that as public transit.
Just really quick, wanted to go back to, totally, point taken, the issue that was identified in the plain, or the situation assessment, was transit service in Salem does not meet the needs of community, particularly the lack of weekend service. So I think it's really important to remember that, the issue was about chariots specifically.
So the mayor, and then Counselor Anderson, I would just observe, this is an interesting question, because I have no doubt that all of you agree that you want to have adequate multimodal transportation choices available to all the residents of Salem. You have a crisis that is very specific to the bus service, and this is a strategic plan, and maybe you're addressing that, so I think, I think this is a fair question to figure out how you want to state this. Mayor, and then Counselor Anderson.
Yeah, I want to underscore the comments from Counselor Kazer, too. This is what came up, was the bus system. The failed transit system is the bus system, or the less-than-adequate, and it's the one where, and you and I both know it, when you're out, or all of us do, I think, when you're out campaigning and talking, when you're at neighborhood groups, the issue is that bus system. And we might be, I think that's why it's here. I don't think it's here about bike racks, it's not here, certainly, I think you're correct, Counselor, about trains, but, but it is about that bus system. It used to be ours, they took it over, and it has not worked well. Its funding system is all screwed up, but it needs some help. We just have to get ourselves, as a city, as city leaders, I think we just got to get focused on this. There may be no hope, but I don't believe that. I think there's a way through this, we just got to work with them real hard, I think.
Counselor Anderson, and then Counselor Nagy.
Thank you. I think that this is also an equity issue, this is a justice issue, and it goes right into one of the other goals we were talking about, affordable housing, social services, homelessness, these are services that people who, we need to take care of. In that first group, one of the ways of taking care of them is providing them with adequate, appropriate mass transit. So, you know, to me, we've got a moral obligation to do this, and so I'm very interested in anything we can do to help all levels of our society.
Counselor Nagy, and then Counselor Hoy.
Thanks. I'm just, as I look at the issue that came up with the surveys as well, you know, I'm fine with that, it's just weird calling someone out by name, and it actually almost is more of an action than a goal, but I'm fine with it.
They have, they have just not done the job. It's unfortunate to call out another political entity, but we've got to get this thing fixed. The people we represent need it, and they don't seem to have the capacity to fix it.
You could, you could make more or less the same statement that just says, work to fund and provide a public transportation, or something like that, that just doesn't name chariots.
What if they change their name next year, then we have to change our goal. Like, I don't-
I would be fine changing it to Public Transit System or something, I don't, I prefer to keep it with chariots, because that is our bus system. And I do have to just say, I can't let this moment go by without saying that, excuse me, I was called out at a neighborhood association meeting on Thursday night by a resident from Elma, who was very disappointed in, with this process being held on a Saturday, because she's a wheelchair-bound and relies on the bus service to get around, and was not able to participate today, because we held it on a Saturday. And I just want to point that out as a, as an irony, and something that, why this goal is so critical that we get it fixed.
Counselor Clark.
I did that to you the other, last time, too.
That's okay. So just to speak, just briefly, because this is the second time that I feel that it's issued, and Counselor Anderson talked about, you know, need to take care of, need to take care of, and I know part of our values are compassionate city, I just want to remind the group, in an empowerment model, everyone has something to give, so it's not so much about providing in order to take care of, it's about providing services so people can meet their own needs, and they can take care of themselves. Because ultimately, if we're looking at sustainability on a bigger issue, sometimes it's the teaching the person to fish, and something like a robust transit service and an options, as we're all speaking to, provides people with the ability to decide what their costs are going to be, to decide where they're going to live. So it's a language issue, I won't wordsmith it, but people are able to make these decisions if we present those options, and that is part of our job.
I think that's correct, and I would be happy to substitute every time I said take care of, provide for the needs of, and that's what I was talking about when I discussed my opening thing, was this is a justice issue.
That's where I was going with provide for those in need, it just, provide for the needs.
Do you want to just, it feels to me like everybody, that basically everybody's in agreement about what needs to happen, but there's some nervousness about how it's stated as a city goal. Perhaps it could be, you know, work with partners to provide a bus system that meets community needs, or a public transit system including buses, or something that tries to name the problem without naming the agency.
I think that would be fine, I, because it's also bigger than just chariots, it's also the two counties and the city of Kaiser, so I like the idea of other entities.
Then we could call it Salem-Kaiser Transit District, because there's no one else out there doing this service. I mean, we can try to wordsmith our way around who's in charge of this mess, but we're gonna have to help them, and they are the people in charge of the situation.
Does it just want to say fix a bus system?
My, my issue is, I don't, we got to support them, we got to get in there and actively support them. Partnering, to me, is a whole different term, where it sounds like we're accepting some responsibility for what, we don't have the responsibility, because we don't fund it, it's their job to fund it, we have no money to fund it, we can't fund the programs they're responsible for now.
So we did have this-
If it's support all efforts to fund and provide a public transportation system, that's fine, but putting partner in there, I have a problem.
So we did have this conversation during our, during our meetings, and we actually wanted to be, and that was one of my points, is we want to be an active partner with this. It's not just a matter of supporting them, it's actually being part of the solution, because our residents and our city depend upon it, it's not just, it's not just something we can say, hey, this is your problem, fix it, we have to, we have to work with them to get it back.
They can't. They just can't.
Well, and to get to, to think of it like a Raci chart, if you're familiar with them, we may not be responsible, but we're accountable, the citizens hold us accountable whether or not we're actually able to provide the service, so.
And this isn't completely foreign territory. Municipalities have worked with transit providers, public transit providers, to run campaigns or meet needs when there's shortfalls, or in whatever capacity, and we get to decide that going forward. So if there's issues that people are skittish about, we can decide to move forward and address them as they come up.
So could it be work with partners to fund and provide public transportation, including a bus system that meets community needs?
Which bus system? I'm sorry, let's call it out. I do not understand this hesitancy to call it out.
The hesitant is just weird.
I don't get it. I just don't get it.
I find what's at top one as it is.
Yeah, I am, too.
Okay. Partner with chariots in their efforts to fund and provide a public transportation system that meets community needs?
Let's do it.
Okay. Sounds like we're okay with it, as proposed. Almost highlighted in red, that would be inflammatory.
Correct.
It was accurate. Use pink. All right, so we have worked through the six key topic areas that the work groups worked on, and I'm going to use this portable mic, which I don't think is gonna, I'm just gonna have to talk loud.
Yeah, I'll use the mic.
I think this is on, but it's not, does it amplify my voice? All right, we're good. Okay, so we talked about affordable housing, social services, and homeless- Okay, so, we talked about affordable housing, social services, and homelessness, coming around to adequate housing supply and security of housing for those in need, regardless of economic situation or status, with maximized access resources and services for the homeless, which is a mouthful. We talked about a vision for growth, a vision for Salem's physical form, develop a comprehensive, long-term vision for growth and development in Salem that has buy-in from the community, and economic vitality, business support programs resulting in higher survival rate for small business, growth of existing, and attraction of new businesses, as well as a vibrant downtown with low vacancy and quality housing. Talking about critical infrastructure, simplify and stream, better align, clarify, and clarify infrastructure priorities and funding with council and community goals. Fiscal sustainability, ensure fiscal sustainability and provide improved services by aligning resources with cost of services and maintaining the fund balance. And, public transportation, partnering with chariots in their efforts to fund and provide a public transportation system that meets community needs. So it seems to me kind of where we are was there was some concern that maybe the first one wasn't quite right. We also had the bike rack that identified climate change, child-friendly city of all ages, and commercial localities as issues that weren't resolved. My hunch is that commercial locality just needs to get included in the vitality section. It's just something we don't want to forget. I don't think it's a separate goal. I guess I would have a question about whether those are separate goals, and whether we want to wade back into the first one. Councillor Anderson.
Well, I don't have a question about the first one, and I move we adopt as a goal, we adopt as a goal, adopting a Salem Climate Action Plan.
Let's, let's take a minute before you try doing motions at this point. One of the things we don't, none of us are familiar with this thing. We just got it. No, Tom, why don't we do this just like we did the other strategic goals, put together the work group, and move this thing forward so we can also have some very specific things relative to Salem and incorporate it?
Well, that's fine with me, and if we want to put it that way, I'm, I'm happy saying we incorporate a work group of this group to do that, and.
What I, what I'd suggest you do, if you want to do it that way, is I would suggest you move the entire bike rack. Let's, let's move all three forward, if you agree, all three should move forward, allowing the opportunity to have those set up as, in the same way we did these other strategic planning goals. Go through the similar process.
I'll say for the third one, the one that I suggested, that I agree with what you say, it just needs to be incorporated. I'm not concerned about having a separate group talk about it, so I won't speak for anyone else as well.
Okay.
I agree. Councillor Cook.
I would ask, there's one thing that's not on the bike rack that I kind of wanted to see, get feelings about. So, one of my favorite movies is It's a Wonderful Life, and I was really moved by Peter's testimony about the idea of keeping community funds in the community. And I also recognize that while there may be very complex issues, and it may not be as, as singularly focused as a solution, it might be interesting to move a community fiscal or community banking idea into the fiscal sustainability model, and maybe reach out to some of the partners here, whether they're regional banks already that would be willing to do something like that, or, it, it seems interesting enough of the idea of how can we help to, for people that want to invest here. There are models where people have done their own town currency, or ways to give back and help invest. How do people feel about that? What's, what are the ideas?
I'm sorry, did you mean as an activity, or is it a, changing the goal to incorporate?
Not, not necessarily, well, I mean, I guess we could do a work group, but I see it falling under the fiscal sustainability, because I think in the heart of it, it's about if I want to make an investment, or if I have this, how can I, you know, your money is in this person's business, your money is in this house.
I, I just meant, do you want to change, are we re, talking about the goal, or are we just saying that's one of the activities that we want to make sure is part of the action plan?
Either adding it to the bike rack, or putting it in one of the goals.
Would you be willing, just to kind of get through this, because I'm not sure that just saying bank and not credit union isn't short-sighted, and some other things that perhaps we could turn this over to the staff, and have them at least give us the statutory structure we'd be wandering into of, of setting up banks, or looking at those kinds of issues. I, I think this is a more, I think Peter's idea is a very interesting one. I saw it years ago in the discussion of the state bank at the state level, when I was in the legislature, and it was really interesting.
Well, and.
It just, it always kept running into statutory issues and stuff. I just think we could get a better feel for it before we go down a road on it.
Absolutely, and I think, absolutely, and if we wanted to wait until budget is over, I wouldn't want to put more, Kelly does wonderful.
So, let me try this on you then, just to see if this makes sense, would be to put these together into the, whether it's three of them, or two of them, or whatever, to go to staff, for a staff report, give them a chance to look at this and determine what their capacity to staff these is, if they have the right people to staff it, what the timelines might look like and how it'd be structured, and let it come to us in a regular city council meeting with some thought behind it, and give us each a chance to think about it.
Is that, you're meaning by these, the climate change, child-friendly cities of all ages?
Yeah, the bike rack, is to get it to us in a regular council meeting with a staff report, because we're asking for staff time, we're doing some other stuff here that I think it'd be, I, I just think it would make more sense to me to have some time on it.
I fully would support that, but under, I would want to make sure that it would be done while we're doing the strategic planning process.
Oh yeah.
Because if, moving forward, we don't include climate change or accessibility, we would be remiss in that process.
Well, the strategic planning process is, is an ongoing process. I, this, I see this as, throughout my term as mayor, I assume you all are looking at it throughout your terms as councillors, will continue this kind of process, so, I think this is really healthy stuff, so.
I think that's a great idea to send it to staff, and keep it consistent with these other, the other groups. But instead of coming back at a regular council meeting, I would hope we could have maybe another work session where we could have this sort of discussion around it. It's a little less formal, a little more interactive, and I think that would be more productive in order to give it, give those issues the same attention that the rest of them have had.
Do it right, do it before a council meeting, so the, your constituent can get here from Elma, I think.
Not on the Saturday, that would be great.
Yeah.
It seems to me that, so, I'm hearing good support for, "We're not going to try and resolve these issues today." I would suggest that the last suggestion about community banking, as councillor Cook suggested, is kind of an idea that the fiscal sustainability group ought to take up in their future work. It's not being proposed as an overarching goal that might, I mean, I'm just trying to put it in context.
Oh sure.
I think, and then I think there are two that were sort of proposed as overarching goals about climate change and about child-friendly and city of all ages, are something that you want to hear from staff about, sort of how does that fit into the overall structure and the input you got during the first thing for consideration as potential.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Sure.
And that, we don't need a motion for that, that we will just do.
And, and I would presume that, that the two issues we're talking about, I understand, now that I know what fiscal sustainability is, I understand that I, that that comes under our purview, the community bank and, and other things. But then I would presume in the other two, there will be a, another council staff work session, and we will do what we just did here, we'll have a meeting, and staff will present to the council members on that work group their findings, and then we'll come up with the same sort of plan we just did here, for each of the other goals. And, and I, I think that'd work. I, I'm not sure where child-friendly city of all ages fits in in.
It works really well, don't get us started.
Yeah, no, no, I was looking at councillor Cook, and that's for a smaller group.
Oh, if I may.
The moms and us old people have an idea here.
Yeah, so, so I would be in favor of that.
So I think the, I think the, the general agreement is now that we're pretty much okay with these six goal statements that have been said, now they've probably all got a little bit of wordsmithing that would be appropriate. And that we want to ask staff to do some thinking about how these other two ideas as possible objectives about climate change, and about a child-friendly city of all ages, how they would fit into this structure, and how they fit with all the feedback you've had already for consideration at a future work session. We'll have to sync that up with the strategic planning process, and Terry, in a second, I'm going to ask you to kind of comment about the steps that come next. So, where we go from here, we have, we, in my initial introduction, we said we had a, we had a vision, we had a mission, we had core values. We are now most of the way through articulating some strategic planned goals. We need also activities and performance measures for those, so that's the next piece of work in this process, to complete the strategic plan, and then there's a transition plan, and how do we adjust what the city government is doing in its ongoing operations to align with this plan. Terry, do you want to add on that before councillor Anderson corrects me?
Then I'd get a chance to correct Terry, too.
Yeah, just a couple things. One is just a clarification, because I think I heard it two ways, and, and one was, and I'll say it the way you said it last, Brian, that there would be staff work between now and the next work session that would deal with these two issues. And another way, maybe it wasn't said, but the way I inferred it originally was, that we would create two new working groups, that we would try to get up to speed on that issue. And if we do that, I would recommend not an additional full meeting just for those two topics, but rather trying to fit that into the next agenda.
Right.
So my question on that one in particular is, is it a working group with council members, or is it a staff, some staff work without council members to bring you something to consider?
Well, I think that's what we'll work out with staff and get it pulled together. I, I think we'll figure out who wants to be on these working groups and how to schedule it. That was, the difficulty of just getting us all, the right people into the room is its own challenge, and this gives us a, a chance to have the staff develop what the discussion's going to look like, understand what the background needs to look like, and then whether or not it, they ought to be separate issues, or they're just lenses that would be used in the, the evaluation of growth and housing and whatever else. It's just trying to get a fix on what this stuff is. Climate change is a very broad discussion item. Child-friendly and all ages, we, we both know, Sally and I know, is a very big issue, so there's some work that we, I think, needs to just be done to kind of clarify what we're doing here.
Councillor Anderson and then councillor Nankie.
Thank you. I would suggest that these two issues be dealt with in the same way that we dealt with the other six goals. You know, and we're just going to have to work a little faster on that to get to it. Because I think the staff interaction with the smaller group in those kind of meetings produce some very good results on the other six goals, and it can produce them on, on these goals as well, both along the line, should they be alone, or should they be a template or a filter. The other question I have is, do you envision the groups, the six groups that we already have, Brian, of meeting again to move into the implementation transition stage?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, I'm happy to volunteer to be on the climate change ones, since somehow I only got on two out of the six before.
Are we taking, are we giving the spots now?
Brian, you had, you had a, a second question for me, which was, what about the rest of the process?
Why don't we hear what councillor Nankie has to say, and then, then we'll go there.
Well, on the bike rack or parking lot, or whatever the heck we want to call it, if we're going to set up work groups, I'm assuming that means we're going to have a goal statement from that as well, and I'd like to actually see from, it's jumping around the previous process?
Well, we haven't, that's why we're turning it over to staff to get some guidance on this.
We just said we were going to have work groups for both of those, so.
Do you want the goal statements now?
No, it's like, I don't necessarily agree with an actual goal statement to climate change in and of itself. I mean, if we're talking about being environmentally responsible.
Yeah.
Because we don't have that in anything else. But to lump one issue, climate change, which there's a lot of potential discussion in the community on, you know, and listening to the folks talk earlier, some of the activities underneath that are just environmentally responsible, by sticking a climate change name on it, you're going to have a lot of pushback from a big chunk of the community.
Yeah.
So.
So I'm having a little bit of the flashbacks with the sustainability work group.
Uh huh.
And the verbiage there. What language would you feel comfortable with if we were to change?
I don't know, but to just say, let me stick something on that list then, and we'll make a work group for it as well.
I, I think, I think that one of the, and it happened with the sustainability work group, and it could well, I mean, we could talk about climate issues, we could talk about, or we could talk about environmental change, or, but the idea is, are we meeting the goals? Or should we be using those as part of a lens, or part of a broader discussion? I understand your sensitivity on this, I do, and I, I want to make sure that we get some time to really think about it and work it through, and see if we can get to a point we can talk about all the issues associated with it, incorporate them in. Leaving these issues out would be a mistake, I think you and I would agree, or it would be a mistake, some of the issues.
Right.
So, let's see where we are on this stuff. That's all I think we're talking about now.
Yeah, and I'm just kind of confused on the process, on how when initiates a work group.
I think councillor Nankie's asking a, a question that's worth putting out there. I think that what the mayor said a few minutes ago was, we were going to ask staff to evaluate these two questions, and come back to council with how it ought to be dealt with in the strategic plan. I think some councillors interpreted that as we are going to create work groups, just like the work groups we have in these others, and come back with goal statements, and they were being added to the list, and those aren't synonymous.
Correct. So I'm confused as to what we're really doing.
Well, let's get the city manager up and find out. Because someone can interpret all this.
Well, certainly, I will follow the consensus of council, but my takeaway was what the mayor just described, or, excuse me, what Brian just described as the mayor's recommendation for council's consideration of these two issues that were, were brought up today.
His first service.
And I think staff, well, excuse me councillor, I think staff will certainly strive to, to provide that, that analysis, if you will, so that if council did choose to incorporate those two items as a goal, that perhaps not quite in sync with the other goals, but that we would certainly have that urgency in mind as, as we did our analysis.
Just a couple comments. The first one is, I think there's a misnomer up there on the board, and that's creating part of the problem. We're not talking about climate change, we're talking about a climate action plan.
Yeah.
And, when you throw in climate change, then we get into the whole sustainability thing, and we don't want to go back into that discussion we had about noun, verb, adjective, but, so I think we need to talk about a climate action plan as opposed to climate change, and that, I would think ratchet down a bit. The second point is, we've been talking a lot about community involvement and hearing from, from the community, and all the things we've got up there until now have been the goals that the council has sat around and talked about.
No, 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 that's, that's.
Well, I take that back, sure, because that was the, yeah, all the other goals, but that's what we pulled out of that, and I'm not sure that there wasn't this same stuff that should have been pulled out before, and if so, you know, I say that I'm remiss in not, in not doing that, because I think this is a thing that is a concern of a number of people in the community.
Well, well, both of them were here today, then, I mean, do you see what, don't let it, don't let it get down to the two people show, or 10. These, our, our stuff arose out of a community survey of the entire community, it was open to a major public discussion. We are taking up an issue brought by two people today. I mean, that's not a bad argument to, I mean, I think we're being very open and very responsive. I like your idea of climate action plan, but I, I think, don't be unfair on this.
Yeah, no, and I, I do agree that I misspoke on that in terms of where it came from, but I would bet if we went back and looked at all those things in the community meeting that night, that there would be areas of this, and perhaps we should have looked at this a little more in stating our original goals.
And we're taking remedial action here.
Councillor Cook and then councillor Lewis.
Just to, I really like what the mayor had spoke about, the lens to view things. Quite often, we use that term with equity, so equity isn't the sprinkles on top. Quite often, we use that term with equity. So, equity isn't the sprinkles on top. The climate action plan isn't the, the sprinkle, and neither is the child-friendly cities. It's how we view our policies, it's how we make our plans. And so, in that case, there may not be definitive steps. It may touch on all of these other goals in ways that we incorporate what we're doing, and make it accessible, and make it long-term and sustainable. So.
Yeah. Okay.
Councilor Lewis, and then Councilor McCoy.
As far as the issue, I, I'm in favor of the mayor's opinion on having staff look at the issue and bring it back. As far as the issue of the climate action plan, don't, don't fool yourself. You can use whatever words you want. If climate is on the board, it's climate change we're talking about. Just like if we, Marine Drive is on the board, it's the bridge we're talking about. Let's not fool ourselves.
So. Councilor McCoy.
Two things. One, I agree to that, that I, we don't need to set the work groups up. I think we need to do, as the mayor's suggesting. But I have a question on the child-friendly cities. I get that, and then it says for all ages, after you start with child and you get all ages.
We had to include you in there, Councilor McCoy. No, I'm kidding.
She was being nice to me and including my interest.
No, well
So, it should be
I think there's a piece of punctuation, that's friendly city for children of all ages.
Mr., would you mind if I
Child-friendly, so it's just a one.
We're looking at, I think
So, then it's a city friendly for everybody? I don't, it makes no sense to me, then.
There is a, really, I, what, I think what Councilor Cook was doing was, was there are a set of initiatives going on around child-friendly and, and in all ages. It's a, it's a broad discussion of how you look at your community in a broad way. And it may not be another strategy, it may be just another way of looking at things, but you look at it through a, the, the viewpoint of people of all ages. Does it meet the needs of a community from, from essentially birth through death? I mean, do you have the right kinds of things going on in your community? Do you have the available infrastructure? Do you have the available services? Do you have that kind of stuff?
So, then
It's another way of looking at things.
Basically, just look at how we make this city friendly for all ages.
For, that's exactly it.
Which would include children.
But, yeah, it's just, it's just too, yeah, it's a way of saying it, I think.
So, if, if I may.
Yeah.
So, the child-friendly cities designation is from the United Nations. Several cities throughout the world and, and countries throughout the world have adopted it. It essentially talks about how children are able to live and move and grow throughout their community. So, all of these things play a role. The thing that comes closest to it that I could kind of give that you might be familiar with is CASA. When someone is in court, a child doesn't get to testify and say what's in their best interests. Kids can't vote, we don't hear from them.
I get that. So, but my point here is you've got
Why, all ages?
Yeah.
Because quite frequently, well, because they're the bookends of society, and quite frequently, both of their needs are similar. When you build for one or the other, you accommodate everyone in between. So, the needs of aging populations as mobility issues come into play, as
Okay.
So, AARP.
So, it should be a city friendly for all ages.
It could be an all-ages city, yes, that's correct.
Okay. That's, that was my question.
Okay.
Had it all flunked together, and it was, it was laid there in conflict with each other.
So, I think that
Okay, I'm better now.
I think the proposal at hand that I felt general agreement on is the staff is
going to do some analysis of both of these issues. I'm certain that part of that analysis will be clarifying exactly what the issue is and what we should call it. And I'm certain the staff will check in with the most interested councilors before they propose something. I feel confident that all of that will happen.
Okay, don't be snarky up there, Brian.
No, I'm
Something with the markers.
I think, I
Juggle.
I can do that. So, I'm feeling pretty good consensus on where we are on this, that we have six goal statements that are on their way to being reasonably well-worded. And we have two issues that staff's going to do some analysis on and figure out how they should fit in the plan, whether they perhaps should be considered as an additional goal, whether they should be a lens that goes through the whole thing, and that'll come back to council for consideration. We are asking the existing work groups to do some more work on, on refining issues and measures. And I want to give Terry a chance to kind of give you a preview of where the process is going from here.
Yeah, I've got maybe three things. They're, first two are brief. The first one is just, well, two reminders. The first one is to remind you how we got to where we are right now, which is, we did a, a phase one situation assessment that included a lot of internal work and surveys and meetings, et cetera. And based on that, you as council then came up with the six items that we then dealt with. You clearly have the authority and the responsibility to think broader as, as you learn stuff. And so, now you're telling us there might be two others that you might want to add. That, that's fine. The second thing I want you to remember, that it might make you feel a little bit more comfortable on this, is that there is a June 1st public open house, at which point we are not asking people to vote on specific actions. We're asking them, do we have the right goals, and what do you think the actions might be? So, I think it would not be inconsistent for staff to have done some other work and be able to somehow incorporate that into the open house. So, to say, you know, we've got these six, and here's where they came from, and then there were a couple others that were introduced, and here's what we know about that. So, that's the second point I want to make. The third one, as Brian said, looking at the rest of the process, just to look a little farther forward and to be, to be able to say, remember when we talked about that. My experience with this kind of work is that we end up getting a lot of critique, that we're not getting specific enough, we're not getting to specific things built or creating new programs. All we're recommending is more studies. And that's going to come up when we get to the strategic plan. But if the technical and political solutions were really obvious, you would already be doing them. And instead, you're either not doing them because you don't know enough about them yet to know what to do, or you disagree about what to do, which then requires discussion, which requires some data. So, I'm just alerting you to the fact that it is not uncommon for a strategic plan to have several items that are, we need a study to solve this. So, a lot of things that you have up there on actions, for example, just to pick what's staring me straight in the face, under fiscal sustainability, we don't know exactly what all those actions should be. And what I'm reminding you of is, that is not something that you have to solve as part of the working group during the next couple of sessions that you have. What you need to do is to be able to say, there's enough here that we need to put this into our strategic plan so it gets on our agenda, so we get the information we need to be able to make those discuss, those decisions. So, that, that's a long way of saying, what we see next is the working groups with, and maybe mainly staff work, but some council help presumably, kind of refining these, the goals if we need to, getting to the June meeting, seeing what the public has to say about that. Based on that, we then have another meeting like this with you folks to talk about what are the final goals and what direction do you want to give on actions. Then those working groups are meeting again during the summer with probably more staff involvement than there has been for two reasons. You're going to be moving into actions, and you're going to be moving into performance measures. Both of those have clearly a political issue that we want councilor involvement on, but there are staff that have worked more on what's, what is the full range of possible actions, what do we do now, and how do we measure that? So, that's what we see happening in the summer. And in parallel with that, we are then working on what we're calling the transition plan. How do we get this thing implemented in year one? And that then leads to council meetings in September, where we're trying to get adoption of the strategic plan, and then clean up and get final action on the transition plan during the fall. So, that's, that's the overview of where we are.
Councilor McCoy.
I would, you know, I, I would hope that if we're looking for public opinion, we're not going to just depend on that, on another open house like the last open house, which was co-opted by a very organized, very energetic, very committed group of people that did show up. And, you know, and you got to congratulate them for that. But, you know, after going through that plan, I had, I didn't walk out of there going, boy, that's, that's the community consensus of what we ought to do moving forward. It was clearly a one, one organized group's plan. And I think if we do this again, we have the same group show up, you're going to get the same results. And I'm still not sure it's going to be reflective of the general or, or reflective of all different segments of the, of the community and what they think needs to be done.
So, so
So, is there other ways to reach out and get, or plan to do that?
Great point, Councilor McCoy. So, in response to the various feedback we got, both during the public involvement during the first phase of this process, and the fairly public critiques of the way we got that public involvement during the first phase, we made several adjustments to this second phase we're in the middle of. And we just did all of these work groups in which we invited people to participate in this. And we're doing this work session right now with a fair amount of public comment at the beginning and observation of what's happening. And we thought it was important to maintain that open house for the second phase because, and we're not doing an invited participation thing because we got a lot of, people didn't think that worked very well. So, we're doing this open house because that means everybody gets a chance. And then at the end of the day, it's going to be the elected official's responsibility to interpret the public input that you get and decide, how does that relate to what your electorate really thinks? And that's your job as an elected official, and we'll do our best to get that. We could add more kinds of public involvement if you wanted to, but currently that's not in the plan or the budget. So, I think we have achieved what we were trying to achieve during this work session. Now, we've talked about the immediate next steps. So, I think my job as a facilitator is done, and we're like nine minutes before that adjourn time. So, I'm like, I want my gold star back. And I'm going to turn it back to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. I, I do want to just add to Terry's comments, you also have some of these action items coming to you in the budget. I mean, don't lose track of how many of those are, there's a comprehensive plan update, there's our homeless initiative, there's a series of these kinds of things coming at you in the budget and in the budget discussions. So, I, I hope you'll take a look at all of that, too, that we're, we're actually moving out on some of this stuff, even though we haven't completed everything. We're trying to get going. Is there anything else? Did anyone want to comment on any of this? Councilor Nanki?
Yeah, just that, again, similar to your last statements, a lot of the tasks or action items that the work groups listed, a lot of them are already in progress. You know, bonding strategy, we've been working on that for quite a while, and
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I don't see anything on communication, though, which is kind of what we were just talking about, which is one of our biggest issues as well.
That's a good point. Yeah. Councilor Lewis?
Well, I hesitate to bring this up, but I, I feel obligated. I want to address an issue what I refer to as corporate paranoia. And we've heard at the beginning of this meeting, one of the ideas of having a local bank is because we all know the national banks are out to screw us. Somebody who has worked for, had worked for 25 years for a national corporation as a manager in this area, I can tell you that is not true. If it wasn't for the national corporations, the local, the local companies wouldn't be able to do what they do for the local community. This idea that there's a money truck backing up to someplace like US Bank every night, unloading, putting all the money in that truck, and then driving it out of town is crazy. What I request the staff do is talk to the banks in Salem, the national banks. Ask them how they spend their money, what they do to support this community. Not just assume that they're out grabbing as much money as they can and sending it out of town.
Thank you, counselor. Anyone else? Okay, good. Well, we will obviously have lots more to talk about as time passes. I, I would, I do, I'm just going to mention, and I, I think it helps resolve some of the concerns that have been expressed. I, I'm not one of those who is a critic of you having some invited response to this. I, I think there is a certain amount of that, that doesn't hurt a bit to at least have some, some folks responding, figure out what's going on. I appreciate that we have really good organized attendance here, but there's a lot of people missing that are going to have to at some point weigh in on this stuff. We need to hear from them. So, hopefully, you, there will be some sounding board going on with the, the materials here. Okay, we're all done? We're adjourned?